Recording in progress.
Oh, and welcome to the Special Capitola Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, October 30th, 2025. This meeting is open to the public with both in-person attendance at the City of Capitola Council Chambers, 420 Capitola Avenue, and remote viewing is also possible. Planning Commission and staff are attending in person and members of the public wanting to offer public comment need to be present. Public can livestream the meeting on the city's website, on YouTube, or on Zoom following the link on the meeting agenda. As always, this meeting is Cablecast Live on Spectrum Communications Cable TV, Channel 8, and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99, and is being recorded to be rebroadcast on the following Mondays and Fridays at 1:00 PM on Spectrum Channel 71, then Spectrum Channel 25. A recording of the meeting will also be available on the city's website after the meeting. Our technician tonight is Brian Robinson. As a reminder, please turn off your cell phones during the meeting. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Howard.
Here.
Commissioner Q.
Here.
Commissioner Welch.
Here.
Vice Chair Christensen.
Here.
Chair Essie.
Here. Now, can you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you all. Item number two on our agenda are additions and deletions, and we have one addition. Additional materials came in for item 5A, I guess, today. There was another one today?
We have three emails total for that item.
Three emails total, okay. Thank you. Any other additions or deletions? Nope, hearing none. Let's go on to oral communications. Please review the section on how to provide comments to the Planning Commission for instructions. Oral communications allows time for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on any consent item on tonight's agenda or any topic within the jurisdiction of the city that is not on the public hearing section of the agenda. Members of the public may speak for up to three minutes unless otherwise specified by the chair. Individuals may not speak more than once during oral communications, and all speakers must address the entire legislative body and will not be permitted to engage in dialogue. Are there any members of the public that would make a comment at this point?
Hi, my name is Goran Klopic. I'm a former security guard of Zelvols on the beach from the past. I was advised by somebody from the police department to not talk about certain things which happened one time in the village here on Capitola, which I feel disgusted about, you know? As a citizen, I'm a citizen. I'm American, but I also have a different passport because I served overseas in the army. I've seen stuff happen if people don't speak up. I will keep continuing speaking up that there was one times some cocaine trafficking going on here in the city of Capitola and also village of Capitola. I saw with my own eyes that, and I met with Andrew Dally, the police chief back then. He understood my English pretty well. He was not surprised. He knew exactly who I was talking about. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, hearing none. Move on to item four, starting with Planning Commission comments. Any comments from the commissioners tonight?
Yeah, just real quick, I would like to say thanks to Katie and Jamie to get together with, actually, our city council appointment person. So that was a good opportunity to get together, because my time as planning commissioner, I've never really met with the council person who appointed me and the city staff to go over the agenda, but I thought it was a good time and brought out some good issues. So, thank you.
Thank you. Good comment. Any staff comments?
I just want to announce that the next meeting on the Mall will be November 19th, a special meeting, and at that point, we'll have a draft ordinance on the Mall. So, if anyone's tuning in, please join us again on November 19th. Thank you.
Okay. With that, we'll move to the public hearings, and we only have one item on our agenda tonight, which is the Capitola Mall zoning code amendments. So, I think we have a staff presentation, and maybe consultant presentation to start us off.
Good evening. My name is Ben Noble. I'm a city planning consultant assisting the city with the Capitola Mall zoning code amendments. And we're also joined online by Ryan Call with Urban Field Studios, an architect as part of the consultant team, and city attorney also is available on Zoom as well. So, tonight's meeting is a study session to go over some important policy questions related to the Capitola Mall zoning code amendments. And we're going to focus on five general topic areas that are outlined in the staff report. And staff's recommended approach or format for the meeting is to provide a presentation on that topic, to receive any planning commission questions on that presented material, receive public comment on that discussion topic, and then planning commission deliberation and feedback to staff. We'll then move on to the next discussion topic and then repeat that process again for each of the five.
And I just want to add to that, that we have Jameis William here with us from Malong Geyer Partners. So, when it's time for asking questions, you're welcome to also ask him questions directly.
Okay, let's go ahead with that format.
Great. A few items of background information. So, I think as most of us know, the zoning, the Capitola Mall zoning code amendments are to implement the housing element, and there's a particular program within the housing element that calls for amendments to the zoning code to facilitate housing production consistent with the housing element sites inventory, which identifies a specific number of dwelling units by household income level that needs to be accommodated on that site in order to comply with state housing law. So, that's the origin of this process. On October 2nd, the Planning Commission had a meeting to be introduced to the Mall zoning code amendments with a focus on some of the unique design considerations for mall redevelopment that are different from development elsewhere in the city. And then, on October 8th, there was a community meeting that was held jointly with the 41st Avenue corridor visioning process, and for the mall component of that meeting, we again focused on the design considerations that are unique to mid-rise residential development that is anticipated with development project applications on the mall site consistent with the housing element. So, we received good feedback at that meeting, had an opportunity to answer questions and engage in a dialogue with residents, and so that was all very positive from our perspective. And there is a summary of that meeting that's included in the staff report packet. So, just as a reminder, the Capitola Mall zoning code amendments will imply, will apply to the entire Capitola Mall block between 41st Avenue, Capitola Road, and Clarence Street. There are, it's in total 46 acres. There are 14 individual parcels with seven different property owners on the property. Okay, so, as discussed in the staff report, we have five general discussion topics, and these address some of the most important policy questions that are coming up as we are thinking about the details of the zoning code mall amendments. And so, we're using this meeting tonight as an opportunity to talk about these issues, present staff recommendations, provide the Planning Commission with an opportunity to hear from the public as well as property owners, and then for the Planning Commission to give us feedback and direction as we move forward with drafting the ordinance and bringing that back to you at a future meeting. So, we'll start with general approach. And so, currently, zoning for the mall property establishes a maximum FAR in height, which I believe is, let me make sure I don't misspeak on this, but 40 feet maximum height and 1.5 FAR. But, both the general plan and the zoning code allow for additional floor area and additional height for a project that provides community benefits. So, it's incentives for community benefits, and that's all contained in Chapter 1788 of the zoning code. And this is a highly discretionary process where an applicant essentially has to justify to the city council that the benefits provided to the community are sufficient to justify the increased height and the FAR. And so, they need to come before the Planning Commission under the existing process and the city council for a conceptual review. They need to prepare a pro forma analysis or numerical analysis of the proposed benefit to demonstrate that financially it makes sense to the city to grant this incentive. There are a number of unique findings that the city needs to make to allow for that increased height and FAR as part of the project, and the Planning Commission would make a recommendation, and then ultimately, the city council would have to approve the project and the increased height and FAR at a city council public hearing. So, that's the existing process, and it's, I would describe it as a highly discretionary one. And so, Program 1.7 of the housing element states that as part of the Capitola Mall zoning code amendments, the city will establish objective standards for allowed height and FAR so that project at those heights and FAR can be approved based on those objective standards in the same manner as other development in the city that's not requesting an incentive for community benefit. So, based on that direction in the housing element, we are proposing an approach where increased height and increased FAR is allowed for a project if it's consistent with objective standards and meets the eligibility criteria. So, essentially, removing from the approval process the special findings that currently need to be made for incentives for community benefits and replacing them with new objective standards. Also, projects will need to meet eligibility criteria, particularly the requirement to provide onsite affordable units consistent with the RENA. So, a project must provide a certain number of affordable units, or it is not eligible for the increased height and the increased FAR. The project also needs to comply with the objective standards, including the objective design standards that we discussed at your last meeting and at the community workshop. And also, we're anticipating as part of the eligibility requirement, including a minimum amount of new retail area, as that is an important part of mall redevelopment that we've heard from the community. Lastly, in terms of a proposed approach, that we would allow increased height and FAR for hotel and conference facility with a minimum number of rooms, and this is something that will determine in the near future in terms of exactly what that would be.
And I'm just going to add to, the minimum retail area is to be determined. We're actually doing a market study to see if there's actually market demand. We don't want to have retail on the site if it stays vacant. So, we're studying that, and well, that's why you're not going to see a percentage or a minimum square footage in this evening's presentation.
You want us to ask questions now or later?
Let me, let me finish up with this part of the presentation and then, and then questions. Thanks. Okay, so, question, why incentivize a hotel with conference facility by allowing the additional height and FAR? There's a changing retail landscape. Hotels produce significant tax revenue to the city. Hotels generate less traffic than retail. There's also a lack of local meeting space in the area, so we think that a hotel with conference facilities is an appropriate use to incentivize as part of the mall zoning code amendments. So, one of the things I mentioned previously is that there will be an eligibility requirement for a specific number of units, particularly a specific number of affordable units. So, this table identifies the city's RENA for the entire mall property. So, you can see on the bottom, there's the number 1,777. That's what's identified in the sites inventory as the number of units that the zoning needs to be able to accommodate on that property. And that 7, 1,777 units are further divided by income category, lower, moderate, and above moderate. So, let's assume, just for simplicity, that there was an application to redevelop, redevelop the entire mall property. That application would be required to provide or include 266 lower-income units, 90 moderate-income units, and 281 above-moderate units, because those, that's what's identified in the housing element sites inventory. So, the zoning code amendments will specifically say a project must include the minimum number of units identified in the sites inventory.
So, I want to clarify, that's the minimum number identified in our RENA, and so our sites inventory is a bit higher. The area in the blue is, so, the area in the green is what's required by RENA. So, a project could not move forward if it wasn't meeting those ratios for the housing, or meeting the numbers in green for RENA. But, it can move forward also if it, if the other 1,141 is what's in our housing element in our sites inventory for that additional above-moderate, to bring them up to 80% to make this feasible economically.
Right. So, the, the, the blue, the blue numbers is, would not be required but is allowed, and the zoning code needs to be able to accommodate. The zoning code amendments need to be such that it would allow for the numbers in the blue.
I'm going to just take one stab at this again. Okay, so, the numbers in green, when we got assigned our RENA numbers from this, from Ambac, those are the numbers you're seeing in green that can be accommodated or identified as sites. The number in blue is the number of units we actually added during the housing element update, because if Merlong Geyer was only to produce the numbers in green, it would not be economically feasible for them. So, we included more market rate units, that extra 1,141, to bring up, bring that to an air, a point that it's economically feasible with 80% of the units at market rate, 20% at low and mod housing units. But, in order to get that 75 feet, they have to, they have to include the numbers in green. The blue would not be required.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yep.
Above moderate and additional above moderate, what is really the difference between those two definitions?
Oh, just that it's additional.
It's like above moder.
It's the same thing.
Same price. So, it's not, so, truly, it's 20%.
It's additional, like, beyond the RENA numbers, but that's it.
Just wanted to.
Yeah, it's still above moderate.
Okay.
Question. And this is for the entire mall block. The next slide, if we go to the next slide, the next slide is showing just the Merlong Geyer properties, or, sorry, partners' housing units, and this is what Merlong Geyer would have to produce onsite, the area in the green. But, they, the zoning updates will accommodate all of these units. So, any other questions on that?
And we go into this detail because the ordinance will include an eligibility criteria that a project would need to meet for the increased height and FAR, and that that criteria is that the project provides for the units, a minimum number of units consistent with the RENA for the property as identified in the housing element. And that's particularly important, I think, for the city, because the city really wants to make sure that the affordable units are produced and that they're produced onsite.
The income levels are set within our housing element, but it, it's through the, the actual levels themselves come through the state for Santa Cruz County, and then we base it on that, the area median, and come up the county.
Is there a question?
Just want to clarify one more time. Can you go back to the matrix? This one is for the Malong Geyer area, isolated.
Yes.
Right. And then, the 1,700 is for the total area mall block.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Just keep it up.
And so, this is a slide that summarizes things that I've already said. That there's an existing process under 1788 where there's a numerical analysis, pro forma analysis of the development project, a conceptual review with required findings of community benefit, and then the application needs to be reviewed and approved by both the Planning Commission with the recommendation and an approval to the council.
I'm just going to jump in here. So, four meetings are required. In the conceptual review, it goes to Planning Commission and City Council, and then, once we actually have the application after the community benefits, it also goes Planning Commission, City Council. So, now, the recommended process would be that the developer hosts a meeting and, and give the city prior notification. We'd help get the word out. They'd have required noticing. If the project complies with the objective standards when they submit it, then we would move through a normal planning commission. then we would move through a normal planning commission process of planning commission, well, planning commission review for recommendation to the city council. So it would just have two hearings instead of four.
Okay, so that's the summary of the recommended general approach to allow for the increase and increased height and FAR that's needed to accommodate the RENA on the Capitola Mall sites. And it's really in line with what the Housing Element Program 1.7 says that the city needs to do. We're adding some details into how that actually will be accomplished. So I think we're interested if the planning commission has any comments for us on this general approach, understanding that we'll be getting into more details related to height and FAR and other things as the meeting progresses. But just high-level, general feedback on the overall approach. And I think the plan is that the planning commission will have additional questions for staff, then we'll open it up to public comment and then return to the planning commission for discussion and feedback.
Yeah, right, commissioners, anybody have any questions or comments at this point? Who want to go first?
I'll just take a quick stab. I like that new process right there. I think it streamlines a lot of the work that needs to be done. This is going to be a very intensive process that we're going through. So I do like the recommended process for it.
Add anything?
Well, I'll just add, I, I, this housing element is in a very aggressive push by the state. This is going to have a huge impact on our community. And when it comes down to the Capitola Mall specifically, you know, the city council has kind of set some direction for us already as we move forward. But to me, it comes down to how we, as a group, develop these objective design standards. And I hope that, you know, I'm looking forward to working with Merlangeyer that I think this could be a positive project for both of us. But it, it's going to have a huge impact to our community as far as revenue, infrastructure impacts and stuff. So I'm looking forward to working together with Merlangeyer and, and the city to write down and get some objective design standards that works for all of us. So basically, that's all I got to say, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so I have a few sort of administrative questions. On what you're proposing is we're going to create a new sub ord, or new ordinance, 17 dot XXX that covers in Capitola Mall only all 46.27 acres of it.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. And the intent is, in that ordinance, we will not be referring or expecting any community benefits from any mall developer going forward. We're going to set objective standards, either meet them or they don't. And if they don't, we don't, we don't look at it. If they do, then it goes through planning commission and then city council for approval.
Well, it, yeah, well, it'll be set up differently, that they have to meet certain criteria, which are for community benefits, such as affordable housing, required retail or commercial space. So those, they're, they're built in, but yeah, there's no longer a community benefit review.
Right, so it's not subjective anymore. It's very, very objective. And it applies to the entire mall, not just the 20, what do we got? Merlangeyer has 25.77 acres, right?
So they're 32 acres and there's 46 acres total.
Okay, I'm a little off on Merlangeyer's part. But it applies to the entire mall, this ordinance, the whole mall. We keep talking Merlangeyer.
This applies to the whole block. So it's everything between 41st Avenue, Capitola Road, and Claire's.
Okay, I'm going to make that clear. So you're talking about defining within that, within the ordinance, a minimum, I guess, percentage of retail space? Or are we going to define square footage?
So we are studying it right now. And it could either be a percentage. It could be like a percentage of the overall floor area. It could be a specific amount of square feet. In some of the examples you'll see tonight, we just, for the purpose of studying this, we put in 50,000 square feet, just to make sure it would fit at 50,000. But yeah, so that is not defined yet, but it will be either through a percentage or square feet.
Okay, but again, all these things apply to the entire acreage on the property.
Yes.
And then, the, in the community feedback, there was quite a few comments about green space and public space and all that. Are we going to try to set a standard for that as well in this ordinance?
There will be an open space standard. That will be in the design standards for the, the objective design standards.
Okay, okay.
So there will be circulation standards for roads, open space standards for development, and that is for the entire block.
Right, okay, okay, great, thank you. Any other comments, questions?
I had a quick question about the numbers one more time. I'm, between the last, I think it was a 1,141, and then, and then the 1,777, how, when, when you were, when we're speaking about penciling it out and how the, you know, the return on investment that they're looking at with the affordable breakdown, how does it, how did the last iteration pencil out? And this one does not? I mean, without it being increased, the height and the density and everything else?
Are you referencing 2019?
Well, maybe just the last number and when we, when we increased the height and the density this last time.
So, I'm not quite following. We did have an error in our numbers. So the number in the staff report should have been the numbers that you're seeing tonight. So I think that's maybe what you're referencing. But if you could, is, is it from the staff report?
No, 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 I was just saying, when you had it, when we increased the density and the height, this, I can't remember, it was a couple years, maybe a year ago, two years ago, we were doing the, each, the housing element. Making that economically feasible with the breakdown of affordable to, to, you know, moderate income housing to now, having it be, you know, a larger, higher density with a, you know, greater height. The difference between the two, that's not, that was economically feasible for them then, and making it more dense now. You know what I'm saying with?
So in our housing element, that's where we set the 75 feet and the 2.0 FAR.
Yeah.
So we'll have slides in, we'll, we'll talk about some of those development standards in which they're requesting 85 feet in height.
Yeah.
To, which would create more density, like you get a more dense project, but nothing has changed.
Okay.
So I think that answers your question.
Yeah, I'll just wait for the more slide.
Okay, yeah, nothing has changed in terms of the density that was proposed under the housing element, so. There is no density limit. So that's, it's tricky when we talk about density. It's really the, you, you just calculate your floor area ratio, which is your land and tied to this, how many, how, 2.0, you would take your, the area of your land and multiply it times two, your maximum floor area for the structures, and then your height, 75 feet, that's your limitations for density because there is no density limit on the site.
When we set the 75 feet for the original plan, was there discussion with Merlangeyer before that about what they were looking for in terms of height? Or is that just a new, a new request coming from then to push it on?
That was a request from Merlangeyer during the housing element update and just so that it would be financially feasible for them to redevelop the site. So at this point tonight, if there are more questions on the process that we've laid, laid out and the requirements for what would be required in order to get to the 75 feet, are there any more questions on that before we go to public comment?
Okay, with that, let's open up this discussion of the general approach to the public. Anybody want to make some comments on this? As per our usual rules, you will be limited to three minutes.
Good afternoon, my, my name is Rafa Sanlonfeld. I'm an advocate with Santa Cruz YMB. I think in general, we're supportive of the direction that the city is going in. A couple of things I wanted to highlight are, while there may be not technically be a legal limit on, on the density, there is a practical limit on the density. And that practical limit is, their building code requirements, I think it's about 120 square feet is the minimum that a, a unit is allowed to be. Also, there are limitations on the size of the, about the area of an individual parcel. And I think one of the biggest limitations on density that the city has right now is its parking requirement. And I would encourage the city to not overpark the mall. That was one of the, or the redevelopment of the mall, that was one of the common threads in the, the community, community discussions a couple of weeks ago. And right now, you know, the larger, the, the, the unit, the more parking it's required to have, I, I think that's a mistake because it discourages larger family-sized units. I think if the city wants to have more larger family-sized units, it should be encouraging it by not requiring as much parking. I also think, want to remind the city that you shouldn't be adding additional constraints to housing development. So I, I hope that, we haven't talked about it tonight, but I hope that you're not considering additional setbacks or step backs or impact fees on, on the project. And I, in general, I think the, the reduction of the number of hearings is a good thing. And the city should also be getting rid of conditional use permits for, for housing. Or if it wants to have restaurants or hotel uses at the mall, it should be getting rid of the CUP process associated with that also. Just make it all objective standard requirements. I also mentioned, or I also wanted to mention that the city should stick to its commitment in its housing element to not count the parking garages towards the project's floor area ratio. That's already a commitment the city made, and I hope it, it follows through and honors that commitment. And I hope it also would include the, any retail space, not counting that towards the FAR if it wants to encourage both housing and retail. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Step right up.
I think, my name is Janine Roth. I'm also with Santa Cruz YMB. I think Rafa covered a number of the points that we had in our letter, so I want to be a plus one for that. I do want to just generally remind us of what a great opportunity this is to add housing here in the city of Capitola. Our region, for three years in a row, has been determined to be the most expensive in the country. And I think that what the mall brings is a really unique opportunity, not only to bring housing, significant housing to the area, but also significant jobs. And a lot of what makes us number one in the wrong category is the jobs to housing. So let's make it a real community hub and a place for our neighbors here in Capitola. I think it's great, what I've been hearing about from, from you guys commenting already, to actually separate out the mall standards from the incentives for community benefits, to make them truly objective and to reduce discretionary steps that are in place. And along those lines, I just want to emphasize that that's why having a CUP for the residential portion of the mall kind of doesn't make sense to me because that just adds another discretionary step. So I would consider, I'm not in favor of the staff recommendation to continue to have a CUP. Rafa mentioned the parking. Your parking standards really, just to tie it to the type of units I think you want to see in the mall, you'd like to see family-sized units. And so having too much parking is going to constrain the ability to actually have space for housing. So I would consider that your parking should be reduced to one to 1.25 places per unit. And then, I, along those same lines, just want to remind you that the mall is a transit hub. You know, metro, it's a big place for metro. Love to see it really be stronger as a metro hub. I think Capitola has a real opportunity there as well. And so you have an opportunity to invest in these alternative forms of transportation for that population. Along those lines, in our mess, in our letter, we mentioned the idea of incentivizing D-cycle to have a stronger presence at the mall. It's a small thing, but I think investing in alternative transportation can really go a long way here as well. So just wanted to say it's a big step forward. I know the staff have worked really hard on this and appreciate you guys, your support for standards and our objective, a process that can be as, also as objective as possible and that can deliver the homes, the jobs, and everything that we need to have a strong economic engine here in Capitola. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
David Fox, McCormick Avenue, Capitola. I'm a little bit blown away by the scope of this project. It wasn't very long ago, it was 700 units. Now it's 1,700 units? Do you realize that's increasing our population by one-third in one area? That's one concern of mine. Second concern is our infrastructure. Who's going to pay for that infrastructure? What I see going on now is all of our sewer fees and everything are going up because we have more buildings being built. Why are we the existing people that are having to pay for those infrastructure improvements? Those infrastructure improvements should be attached to any project that's going to be requiring them, not to the general population. Third, I think the lady made a very good point, transit hub. If you're going to have a large project, everybody said you need a good transit hub. You should somehow tie something in that makes them required to keep the transit hub there and not make the metro district go out and buy more land. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Other comments?
Good evening, my name is Daniel Alvarez. I work for the North Call Carpeters Union. We're here to support the project and anything we can do to make it come through. Let's create some jobs and be responsible with the contractors. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on the public? Okay, let's bring it back to our staff liberation on this and recommendations for city staff on how to go forward. Let's limit the conversation to just the general approach that has been presented, not some of these other topics such as transit hub, et cetera, that's been brought up by some of the speakers. So anybody have any comments right now?
I'm in support of the, the city's approach to processing, you know, this, I think the limited number is, is nice to keep the process moving and to, you know, and I feel they've made a diligent effort to keep us involved and informed. So keeping the process moving while disseminating information has, to this point, has been really, I feel, informative and thorough.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any disagreement with that? Okay, so let's move on to the second topic then.
Oh, no.
Oh, existential crisis.
That happens when Sean isn't sitting up here.
Okay. Moving on to topic number two, which is the specifics for the FAR, floor area ratio, height. We're also including parking in this discussion topic. And then also, this question of required new commercial seems to be kind of integrated in. into this conversation as well. So we'll cover that as part of this little, little bundle as well. So starting with the height, the housing element identifies 75 feet on the mall property. Merlot Geyer has requested, in their letter to the city, 85 feet to the top of the building, which is tied to the maximum height that's allowed for mid-rise development under the building code. So the 75-feet height under the building code applies to the lowest level of the top floor. And that, you know, that would allow up to 85-feet height for that type of five-over-three So here's a slide that's showing, I'm not quite sure what's on top there. Okay. So this is what staff recommendation is, is to apply the 75-foot maximum height to And as I mentioned, Merlot Geyer has requested allowing up to 85 feet for building efficiencies, fiscal improved project feasibility, and increased unit potential. And so one of the questions that we've looked at is whether or not the 75 feet could accommodate the 1,126 housing element units for the Merlot Geyer property, also with a hotel conference space and new commercial as well. And based on our site analysis with Urban Field Studio helping us with that, the conclusion is that yes, within the 75 feet, that the housing element units can be accommodated as well as a hotel and new commercial. So I'll leave it at that for that, but if we want to get more into the weeds on that, we can do that.
I'll just add to this. So once, when you put in the square footage for housing units and hotel and new commercial, there'll still be additional square footage for them to play with if, if they wanted to do more housing units or a couple hotels or a lot of new commercials. So there's still wiggle room. This isn't, the square footage is not maxed out at 75 feet.
Right, so the second question is with, the second issue is with floor area ratio. Housing element says maximum 2.0 for a mall redevelopment project excluding parking structures. And Merlot Geyer's request now is 2.0 FAR for residential uses with an additional 0.5 FAR for commercial and hospitality uses and continuing to exclude parking structures from that FAR calculation. So just as a reminder how floor area ratio is calculated, it's the ratio of the gross building square footage on a lot to the square footage of the lot. It's also, I think, important to note that the way that floor area ratio is calculated according to the zoning code is that you look at, for your denominator, the parcel or adjoining parcels that are under single ownership or single control. That's what's used for your site area. So here's the Merlot Geyer area that, this is a figure that we previously showed, that is the area that we sort of expect to see a redevelopment project if one comes in. There's also land that's owned by Merlot Geyer, but for, due to various reasons, we don't expect to see a new development in those locations. That's the hatched area. And so based on what the zoning code says in terms of the process for calculating floor area ratio, that we would use the entire area that's under ownership by Merlot Geyer when calculating the FAR. So that's 31.5 acres. And if there's a FAR of 2.0, that would allow 2.7 million square feet of development as part of a redevelopment project. So here's a table that presents some of that information. So with a 2.0 FAR on the 31.5 acres of Merlot Geyer property, that would allow for 2.7 million square feet of development. And for the entire 46-acre mall block with an FAR of 2.0, that would be 4 million square feet of development.
And I just want to be clear that the, when we're looking at the 46-acre mall block, that's including the Merlot Geyer. So the cumulative total is 4 million. It wouldn't be the 2.7 plus four. It's 4 million total.
And then so below are some of the square footages of what could be, what would be allowed with an additional 0.5 FAR above that 2.0. So about 700,000 square feet of additional development on the Merlot Geyer parcel and about a million square feet cumulative on the entire 46-acre mall block. Okay, so similar to height, question that we asked is, well, would a 2.0 FAR accommodate the number of units the housing element says the zoning needs to accommodate on the Merlot Geyer site along with things the city wants to see in addition to housing, such as a hotel with conference space and new commercial? And the conclusion of our analysis of looking at the site and really thinking about physically what can be accommodated realistically on the site is that we concluded that yes, the housing units can be accommodated with that, within that 2.0, along with a 150,000-square-foot hotel, along with a substantial amount of new commercial with a considerable amount of additional floor area left over that would be available for other uses. So based on that analysis that we did, staff's recommendation tonight is to maintain the 2.0 maximum allowed FAR for a mall redevelopment project, but to exclude a hotel with conference facilities because of the significant benefit that that provides the city, as well as with structured parking as called for in the housing element. So that's staff recommendation. Merlot Geyer does have the request before us for some additional FAR for hotel and commercial development. And we recommend that the planning commission consider that and provide feedback and direction on that additional request. Okay, so I'm going to try to move through this relatively quickly. It's in the staff report, existing parking standards. These were lowered two years ago from what they were previously. Merlot Geyer has requested 1.0 for studios and one bedroom, and then an average of 1.2 for larger units. The zoning code currently has a provision that allows for reduced parking based on the results of a parking demand study. So staff's recommendation is to maintain the existing standards. And if it so happens that a proposed mall redevelopment project will generate less parking demand than what the existing parking standards require, then the planning commission could reduce the required parking as part of a development project application. And then the last part of this discussion topic is the commercial use requirement. The existing code states that on the mall property, residential uses are allowed only in a mixed-use project. Merlot Geyer has requested removing the mixed-use requirement and to allow residential-only projects. The general plan has a number of policies and programs and overall vision for the mall that calls for sort of a mixed-use activity center for residents to live, work, and play. And so for that reason, staff's recommendation is to maintain that existing requirement for new commercial uses with a mall redevelopment project. And then to include standards within the zoning code amendments that require a new active commercial uses to be oriented towards public open space and appropriately integrate it with existing retail on the site. And in terms of the specific amount, as Katie mentioned, the city is working on a market demand study for retail uses, and we'll be using the results of that to identify what the specific standard will be in terms of the amount and other details that might be included. So that will be shared with you when the draft amendments come before you.
So if you go back, this is just a reminder that in order to get here, they'd have to include the onsite affordable units, compliance with objective standards, and then the minimum retail area. And also that, the hotel would also be included. But if we go to the next slide, we just wanted to remind you before getting into this discussion.
So there are four topics: height, FAR, parking, and commercial uses. And we're interested in planning commission feedback and direction on staff recommendation for these.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions, commissioners, on these four subtopics?
I just have a quick question. How much current retail space does Merlot Geyer have in the mall?
I want to say it's around 600,000 square feet. It might be slightly over.
Yeah, I calculated 373, 451. Yeah, the total mall is 640, 631.
That's, okay, that's right. Thank you.
About half of the mall in total.
So I'll just say it under the mic so that it's, so, so everyone hears it. So the overall mall is 640,000 square feet. Merlot Geyer Partners owns 373, 373,000 square feet of that. So just about half, a little over half.
Regarding parking, I heard a lot, or just read through some of the correspondence coming through from the community concerns, like if we do reduce parking, right, what kind of protections would we provide for the kind of surrounding areas or the surrounding streets?
That's a great question, and that's a challenge. You, you pretty much, you can control the site you're working on, or you can try to negotiate deals for utilizing other sites. You can, we definitely allow shared parking requirements with adjacent properties, but we're talking about an entire block. So they could maybe work out a deal with Brown's Ranch if they had excess parking there. But you really try to control it with a parking plan from the development. So I think the development would have rules for their, we would require a parking management plan, and then that would have to be followed.
Other questions? So I have a question about the 75-foot number originally in the housing element. It sounded from Merlot Geyer's point of view, there was a misinterpretation. We specified height to the top of the building, and they took it as the bottom of the top floor. Am I reading that correctly?
You know, I'll let, would you like to speak to that? Yeah, you can go ahead and answer. Yeah.
Okay, okay, then, then just, we'll, we'll deal with it all at one point. Okay, thanks. No, that was it for questions. Okay, let's open this. No other questions? We'll open it up to the public now.
Hi, Jameis Quilliam with Merlot Geyer Partners. I think I met you all virtually last time, so it's good to be with you. And look, I'll just, I'll just start by prefacing it. I, I understand this is a really big project in an awesome town. Change is like scary and big for everyone, and so we're trying to be as involved in this process as possible. And I want to, I want to be here to answer questions and just be collaborative. We, we actually opened a website just to give kind of some representative images of like what redevelopment could look like. And we're hoping that people will go there. We have a bunch of like frequently asked questions about things like parking and traffic. And as we get emails that come in, if it's not already addressed in FAQs, then we just add it to the FAQs. So to the extent, you know, you have questions from neighbors or friends or whatever, you can direct them to that URL. So we'll start with height. So this is something that we run into pretty common. The reason why I wanted to clarify the 85-foot limitations, because that's, that is the height limitation to not trip a high-rise designation for a building. When you go over 85 feet, fire life safety code changes, and the building cost increases dramatically. And so there's a natural ceiling on building height. Most of the cost of these multifamily buildings goes into the parking. I'm going to talk about parking in a second, but the concrete structures are very expensive to build. And the, the wood frame construction, which is, you're maxed at five stories of that, is, puts you at an 85-foot building. And so that's pretty common in the region is like the tallest buildings that you'll see are 85 feet. And there's benefits to doing an 85-foot building, even if it's, it's interior to the site where you, you don't notice it from the exterior. The more units we can put here, right, you can gobble up more of your arena allocation and you have to deal with it down the road elsewhere. And this is, this is ideally where you want to put more housing, next to goods and services and transit and things like that. So that's the reason why. I don't know, I wasn't involved in the 75-foot recommendation previously, and it might have been an oversight from our architects on not pointing out the, the difference. The other reason a lot of times why it's 75 feet to the highest occupiable floor is, depends on road widths in between buildings and fire ladders and how high they can get to get, to make sure they can get up to the top of the structure. So usually you, you work through that as you're working through the design process, and it goes through fires review. Any other questions on the 85 feet? That's, that's basically why I included that in our comments. The other question is about the FAR. So the FAR, we see FAR is much greater than, than 2.0. I recognize this is a much larger site. I'm not at all suggesting that we need, you know, to max out FAR. The, the, the reason why we wanted to account for the additional 0.5 is related to all the other objective design standards that may come up in terms of open space and in terms of affordable building, hotel, the commercial is something I'll, I'll talk about here in a second. But not knowing where all that's going to land, having a bigger envelope to work with is helpful because again, you're capped at how tall the buildings can be just based on the building code. And you're also capped at like the size of a building, because you're, you can't build a multifamily building that's, contains more than like 350, maybe 400 units at the most, because you can't lease up a building. It gets really hard to finance a building much larger than that, because you're leasing like, call it 20 units a month. And if it takes three years to lease up a building and stabilize, you're paying really expensive interest on your construction loan, and a lot of times you can't get it financed. Like lenders have a really tough time getting comfortable with that big of a project to lease up. That makes sense. And so that's why it's usually contained in a, on a per-phase basis, you know, 300 is kind of ideal, 350 units. Much bigger than that can be challenging. So that's, that's the reason for this additional request on the FAR. As it relates to parking, parking, no one wants to build too little parking. That doesn't benefit an owner of a multifamily building. You can't retain tenants. The lease turnover increases exponentially as tenants realize it's a bad place to live because they're having to park down the street and walk to their unit, right? If someone's living in a, in a, in a multifamily building like this, they want to park either on the same level that they live on, which is, you can build a wrap where the parking structure is in the middle, and then there's units around the outside. You park on the same level you live on, or you're in a podium and you're riding elevators. So there's no benefit to building too little. There's also no benefit to building too much, because then you can't finance a project. The parking is the most expensive part of a project. The concrete that it takes to build these, these projects is where we've seen the least kind of pullback in. is where we've seen the least kind of pullback in construction pricing. There's not enough of it. And so there's definitely an art and a science to how much parking goes into these buildings. And there are norms throughout the region that every multifamily building, there's a deep dive into the utilization of comparable multifamily buildings that goes into the recommendation by the development team of how much parking should be there. So the recommendations that we made are related to those minimums. And whether it's a min or a max, you just want to make sure that there's enough flexibility as well to adequately park based on the dynamics in the market. Does that make sense? And then the fourth one was related to the commercial retail. So this one's interesting because what we're talking about is developable portion of a much larger site like you talked about. Target, Macy's, Kohl's has a long-term lease. Ross, we don't own Ross, and the shops adjacent to Ross, they're pad buildings. And then there's retail all surrounding the site. I think maybe a year or two ago, I think you guys, the city commissioned a study from Cosmont, who agreed that building too much ground floor commercial retail is essentially infeasible. It drives up the cost of construction. There's a ceiling on rents that these retailers can pay because their operating expenses have continued to climb, decline. So if you can't, if you can't charge the rent to justify building the space, you just can't get it financed. So the residential in a vertical kind of mixed-use environment, it just, it doesn't pencil in this type of environment on a large scale. Are there opportunities for placemaking through retail? Yes, but I think that's the question is why have a minimum requirement of commercial? Is it for tax revenue or is it for placemaking? Because they're two very different things. The hotel is going to give you way more benefit from a tax revenue perspective. But they're competing for parking because you're not going to build structured parking for either a hotel or for commercial retail in this market. You can't support it. And so what's interesting here at the mall is you have existing retailers. We have reciprocal easement and parking agreements. There's going to remain large surface parking lots. That ideally is where you would park commercial retail and hotel uses. And so you want to make sure that there's enough flexibility. My concern with having a minimum commercial requirement, if it's too large, is it's then competing with the land area for the rest of the project, and then it becomes a feasibility problem. So, and Cosmont laid that out and made kind of recommendations in their study related to requiring vertical mixed use. And if it's not vertical mixed use and it's horizontal, then you're just taking up more land area where the housing could go. And the housing is what's going to justify tearing down existing commercial retail. Right? That's the trade-off that we're always analyzing is we have a mall that's operating, right? The Sears is vacant, although today with Spirit Halloween, it's not vacant. It is cranking today. I was over there earlier and the line's like out everywhere. But obviously that's not every day. So other than Sears, we have an operating mall. And our current focus is to maintain a good operating environment for our mall tenants while looking at these opportunities for future development. Any questions while I'm up here? I know I just threw a lot at you, but.
Yeah, I guess we can kind of go around our rules and ask if anybody has any questions. Okay, thank you. Good presentation. Thank you. Okay, other public comments, please.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, it's a separate, totally separate topic. You can comment again.
No, I just wanted to say I thought he did a really good job. And he cleared up some stuff that I wondered about. But I still am concerned about infrastructure. You know, I just don't want to see our citizens burdened with the cost of infrastructure for other projects. Also, we've just rezoned a lot of property around here to increase the density. So this is not the only project that's going to come before the planning commission. It's going to increase the density of our city. Thank you.
We have infrastructure on one of the following items in the meeting, so we can talk about it then. More about it then. Okay, other public comments, please.
Hello, Ken. I just wanted to generally share and be aligned with the speaker from Merlang Geyer this evening. They have firsthand experience on what it takes to make these projects feasible. And I really hope that the city heeds that advice and follows through with planning changes to the mall so that we can get a feasible, feasible projects that we can meet our housing goals. I don't think anyone wants to see vacant retail. The mall has a fair number of vacant spaces right now. I think it would be a mistake to mandate a certain amount of retail, like was mentioned earlier. And I support the staff recommendation to exclude hotel uses from the far. I don't know if it's necessary to include a conference facility as part of the hotel project. I'd encourage the planning commission just to allow any hotel use, not necessarily just a conference center facility, but maybe there could be additional incentives for conference facilities. But I think you heard that it's going to be important to allow for these separate uses. And if the city really wants to receive the tax benefits from a transitory tax in a hotel, to make sure that that hotel is as feasible as possible. And that means having adequate far to use the hotel and/or to build a hotel. And that means having, not mandating a certain amount of, the current level of parking in the whole project, allowing there to be more flexibility with that. I think the parking demand study, I'm concerned about that because that seems to introduce more, it's not an objective standard. We don't know what the parking demand study is going to say. And I would be skeptical that any study could be, the results could basically be predetermined. And I just hope that the city moves forward with an objective standard that isn't riding on a consultant coming up with a number for the right amount of parking. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other public comments, please?
Hello again, Janine Roth. The one thing I just wanted to, I'm excited about the opportunity here, as I mentioned before. Staff mentioned that parking requirements were recently updated, I think within the last two years. It has, it's, I'm not aware that there's a lot of experience with those multifamily parking requirements actually being implemented. So it's hard to know if those standards actually are enough, not enough, or too much. So I just wanted to remind us all of that as you consider. But you also got some very good information about other elements that parking may depend upon. So thank you all.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments? All right, hearing none, let's bring it back for deliberation.
Chair Esti, I just wanted to mention that Jameis brought up that they have FAQs on their website. And just in case the public is interested, that's at capitola-mall-community.com.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, who wants to go first on this section, development standards? Can you bring that slide back up, which has the four subtopics here? Thanks. Here we are. Height, far, parking, and commercial uses.
I think, I'm sorry, I forgot Merlang Geyer's name. I think he's dead on. A developer is not going to want to build a building that has insufficient parking or too much parking. So I'd be curious around what, you know, what their standards have been. I guess they did show it up there, parking per unit or parking per square foot. I think there's a point to be made. We have our numbers of three tiers. And I don't know, I don't know how many spaces that comes up to be on ours versus theirs. But I think it's a point to consider. And on the height, I, you know, 75, 85. If we can come up with setbacks far enough off of the corridors and have it stacked well enough so it's not the monstrosity, I don't know if 75 feet is any different than 85 feet in general. The square footage, yeah, I get. So those are two comments I have off the top.
Okay, others?
I would say that just to keep things like in scale reasonable and just to kind of protect neighboring neighborhoods and kind of the bulk and scale, I would be comfortable with 75 feet, right, versus the 85 right there. I know that going up to 85 does increase it, square footage for the developer, right? However, it isn't that art and science, right? Like we're trying to fill out these affordable housing units and also commercial, but you know, what fit is appropriate versus just overshooting with a larger envelope. As for parking, I think that we should keep parking where it is, but have incentives coming where, if we could do a parking study. I love the idea of like alternative transportations or keeping the transportation of metro in the hub because if we are reducing parking, right, and we are Capitola, we're trying to find different ways to incentivize getting around and everything. And a lot of conversation is happening in the community regarding increased congestion and traffic up and down 41st. So giving those kind of incentives, I think, would help quite a bit to it.
So when you say keep the parking as it is, just the existing multifamily parking standards, which to reiterate is one for 500 square feet, 1.5 for 501 to 750, and two for 750 and above.
Any comments on commercial uses and having a minimum?
I fall back into the economic model and what this world looks like. If a developer comes to us and says they want 100,000 square feet of commercial because it makes economic sense, then more power to them. So I think giving the most flexibility we can give these developers around the commercial space is important.
I agree with that. I just don't know how the effect that the lack of commercial space will have on the mall in general is a concern for me at least. Turning the entire area into a residential development is worrisome, just. I mean, the mall is not a desirable place to do business, in my opinion, right now. So I could see if it was a more desirable place and it was developed as a more desirable place, could we attract a better, you know, better commerce? And that's just a question, I mean, I guess for people like you that develop these things. But I'm just curious as to, you know, the condition of our retail space right now is just not what it could be, I guess. And.
The question is, do we require it or do we allow them the flexibility to?
Well, that is a question, but at the same time, you know, we have a two, FAR is 2.0, right? So requiring.
Commercial zero, right?
No, we're saying that the mixed use right now is established. They're requesting to have an additional 0.5 on top of the two. So the two would be assigned to the residential and then the five would be in addition. But if we require the five, whether it be in or out of that two allowance, then I just don't want to see, I just don't want to see this giant block of housing, I think. And I'm 100% in agreement for the housing. I'm concerned.
I agree with Commissioner, my fellow commissioner. Quick question. Our staff is doing a study for?
Yes, we're doing a retail demand study to, because it's really hard to assess right now. 41st Avenue is doing pretty good overall in terms of like, there's not too many vacancies and the ones that are there have specific issues tied to them. But at the mall site, the Sears is sat vacant and the Japanese restaurant that used to be.
Takara.
Takara sat empty. But that's also a little bit self-imposed because of redevelopment or planning to move forward. I think they stopped leasing that area before 2019 with that project that went away. But it's, so it's hard to assess. So we're going to have it studied.
Yeah, no, I think that'd be very beneficial on that, especially if we're trying to decide what kind of retail usage we're using here. And with the representative from Merlang Geyer saying like, we have the opportunity to kind of choose like what kind of retail we want this. We want it to be revenue generating, right? But how much does that really get us as in from taxes versus placemaking? How do we optimize and maximize versus just having housing as just one big block right there?
And just my concern is that if we don't require it and we provide the maximum flexibility, they're just not going to provide it. And I mean, not, no fault of theirs, it's, you know, it's a business model and that's great. But how do we want to live in our city? You know, and I just, I would be sad for our city if we didn't have walkability of like, I know that there's going to be retail there, but then having, providing the placemaking and having an area that is developed in a very curated way, you know?
I totally agree with that. I just think that the market forces will drive them to do something.
That's understood.
If you build a block of housing, nobody just wants to live in a block of housing. They want the amenities that go with it.
Yeah.
So there's a balance.
Yes.
You give them free rein and say have at it, or you say, you know, we want 25,000 minimums service-related or.
Well. Yeah.
I get that and I can get behind some minimum number. I'd love to give these guys at least some room to run in terms of developing a, you know, they're going to spend hundreds of millions of dollars to build this thing. They're not going to build a brick.
Of course. Well, then, but you also look at the downtown estate, you know, how they've developed Santa Cruz City and how that has affected commerce down there and how that will affect us if it's in the same vein. And I'm just, I mean, I'm running, I've run a hundred different scenarios through my head in terms of like the architecture and how that'll affect. No, but I just, I really enjoy the dialogue. I've been, I want to know, like, all of the information that you have to give is really, really useful and how this, that's your space in general will be imagined. I guess, yeah.
Well, first of all, thank Jameis for speaking up and it's good to hear some side. I don't know if you're around, I was around the 18, 19 time when we were really close to making something happen and then COVID. So, but here we are today. And along with my fellow commissioners here, I want to hope that we can give you the tools to have a great development, one that's going to benefit our community. But we come from a different set of ground rules. And yours is profitability and ours is our community. So those are really some of my concerns. 75, 85 feet, we're going to just go down the list here. I'm retired fire. It all makes sense to me. I get the 85 feet. Central Fire's got a nice new ladder truck. It would stretch. It's all based on setbacks I'm getting there. And you understand that the, you know, no mezzanines, no patios, or nothing on the roof if that's what they're going by. But I think it's something that we could have a discussion about. I'm a 75-foot person, but 85 feet doesn't scare me. It comes down to, I think we're going to get to a point on these design standards. At least that's what I'm hoping, that we're going to be discussing some negotiable items here. So, you know, for me, that's one that we can look at.
So that was going to be one of my questions for you. Is 85 feet feasible from a fire standards basis?
It's feasible, and the whole thing is the roof at 85-foot is not a living. It's feasible, and the whole, the whole thing is the roof at eighty-five foot is not a living place. Although, you know, they're going to probably have roof access, but, and could, could Central's truck get to eighty-five foot? It would be, it'd have to be a real close setback to get their truck up there. It'd be very close, but, and that's why we go to high-rise standards, right? Because it changes the whole life safety for the residents because we don't have that access from a firefighter department to get there. But anyways, I wouldn't roll down eighty-five foot. I'm not rolling down right now. It's something to discuss, but I'm comfortable with seventy-five foot. Floor ratio, I'm totally fine with. The, the two point O, I think excluding from the parking structure, that's, that's fine for me. I am stuck on keeping our multifamily parking standard the way it is. And contrary to some other discussions here about parking and some of you have been around long enough. We used to have a traffic and parking commission in Capitola because of parking. And there's discussion about trying to bring it back because it's still an issue. Interesting today, I think the plus is going to open up next Tuesday. And they came, they went next door to the church, asked if they could borrow their parking lot for the grand opening. So is parking going to be an issue? Absolutely. And the, the parking is, it's under parked for that, the plus facility and they're going to be on the streets and it's going to be, it's already a problem. They haven't even opened yet. So we're already having the discussion. So I'm, I'm adamant about keeping the current parking standard, multifamily. We could talk about how that works of residence versus commercial and stuff, I guess, but I'm pretty adamant about that. Should new commercial be required? You know, it's interesting you bring up the Cosmo because the Cosmo study also brought up, and this is the issue that I think that we fight. And really, it's going to be a council issue, right? We're going to, we're going to give our inputs and it's going to council. But when we look at the economic side of Capitola, we're not in a good place. And I, I don't know if that's a secret, if I'm saying something I'm not supposed to say. But, you know, we just passed a new tax measures, paying our staff salaries. But where do we go in the next five to ten years? And, and while the mall has not been maybe at optimal range, I got to give it to Brian. I, I went by the malls today just to look again and it was, it was a busy hub. I mean, he's rented out, I don't know what the percentage is, but the majority of it is rented out. And of course, maybe it's not the key stores that you would want to see in a new mall. And maybe they couldn't afford the new commercial space. But I think the commercial versus housing is going to be a rub. And so the Cosmo study also identified what it costs the city for housing. And it's a cost to the city. It's not a benefit to us as far as property tax. So, and I don't know, I, what the Cosmos, I think it said seven hundred and eighty-five dollars per unit, right? So if you do that times your thousand units, you're, we're looking at a million dollar loss from a property tax standpoint. And then we're going to get to the loss of commercial retail space. And that's a loss to us as well, this, when I say us, the city. So I, I am looking that we can come to some type of agreement on what that retail, commercial space looks like. The hotel, to me, is almost a must to offset some of these costs. You know, a lot of people are saying that retail is dead. I, I did a little research just to, to find out for sure where people stand. We've talked about this concept of Santana Row here. Santana Row is growing. They're, they're actually doing extremely well. They added eight new stores, I believe, this year. They're adding, I want to say, five hundred plus new housing units to Santana Row. Westfield next to it, which is just a strictly mall, doing very well, less than six percent vacancy. I don't know that retail is dead. I, I think that it's the type of retail you get. And I think you're in the, you're in the business. And Merlengeyer is in the mall business. And I hope that we can give you the tools and incentives to get the right people there. But frankly, there is no Santana Row on this side of the hill. Sure, we got, you know, downtown Santa Cruz. But I think given the right tools for you and that if we can give you the flexibility to do what you need to do, we could have that shopping opportunity here in Capitola. And, I mean, quite honestly, like one of the neighbors here, this project is, it's a, it's a big project for Capitola. It's going to be probably the biggest thing that this planning commission's done in many years or many years to come. And personally, I don't want it to be one of those projects that my name is tied to if it's not done in the right way. And I think, I think we could work together with some incentives here to get you guys where you need to be. But just to reiterate, I'm for commercial space. I'm for keeping the current parking standard. I'm fine with the floor ratio and the height, I'm, I'm flexible on. So was there anything else I need to discuss on that one?
All right, I'll throw in my comments, just the complete comments, and then we need to go down one by one on these things. The, I don't really see a need economically to go to eighty-five feet. I mean, they're, with the far of two point O, they could build a, by my calculations, a fifteen-story thing and still not exceed the far. So I, I'm lost as to why we need, would need to go to eighty-five, but open to talk about that. If we do go to eighty-five, then I would, I would suggest, as Commissioner Howard said, that we do something where we limit the eighty-five to sort of the central core of the, of the mall. The two point O is fine with me. Parking, I, I tend to agree with our expert from Merlengeyer, that our existing multifamily parking would be overly expensive for them. But because the parking will have to be, like you said, a wrap. We never described this five over three architecture, but my understanding of it, and you could correct me if I'm wrong, is the first two stories, which are labeled three, are pure concrete and incorporate all the parking structures and some housing and some retail. On top of that, that concrete, massive concrete is a wooden structure that's five stories tall, right? So I, parking is, if we're going to do poured concrete, it's going to be pretty expensive. And I, it's hard for me to say what the right number is. I would rely on some experts. I, if we do stick with our multifamily parking, I think we should have some caveat that said, that is, we could discuss it at the point of the design of the whole project. Because I suspect our multifamily parking standards would end up with a huge number of, of parking. Commercial is the one I'm kind of stuck on, stuck on. I agree with Commissioner Christensen about this. We have to have something. We needed something to attract the people to the mall. It's busy today, but I think part of it is because there is retail and retail is not dead. If my numbers are correct, the current retail space they have in there, this probably includes the hallways. It does not include Kohl's, is about three hundred thousand square feet of stores. So probably half of that is empty space, quite frankly. So maybe a hundred and fifty thousand feet of stores. So why wouldn't we just trade one for one and have a requirement of a hundred and fifty thousand square feet on this, on this property? And then we would, at least from a revenue standpoint for the city on that part of this, we'd be revenue neutral. And yes, it gets to be pretty prescriptive, but it seems like something that we could possibly do. Okay, so we've all heard our comments. Let's go to, I have number one. Let's, let's, where do we want to go on that?
I'm just going to ask that Commissioner Howard, your, your mic wasn't picking up very well, so if you can...
Seventy-five feet or eighty-five feet, what's our consensus? We all, we're all sort of wishy-washy on this one.
Is there, I, I think the, Jameis, you had a, something to add? Just really quick, I always wanted to hear what you had to say.
Yeah, step up and let's, let's talk. This is important to the city, so let's hear your position on this.
All these things are important. And I just, I want to answer a couple kind of clarifying things. So as relates to the height, we're, we're open to doing setbacks as well. Like, I understand, you know, seventy-five feet out to Forty-first Street, that sounds superimposing. As was mentioned, if it's tucked inside the site, you won't know the difference. But the benefit of giving us another story is allowing us to then invest in the place making, right? Like, it, it's kind of whack-a-mole. Like, you can't, you can't just say only seventy-five feet, but you have the FAR. We can't go taller than eighty-five feet. We're, it's not feasible. It would trigger high-rise construction. I'd have to charge two thousand dollars more a month in rent to justify high-rise construction. Just, it's not going to happen. So that's the reason why I, I think it's important to consider the eighty-five feet. It really, we should be in this together. It shouldn't just be like, it's not profit, it's feasibility and it's financeability. Profit comes like secondary to, to these other costs. It really is a hurdle of justifying tearing down existing square footage and convincing my investors that that's a good idea. And then convincing banks to lend us money to build the project, right? So there are a lot of eyes that, that are looking at this. And by allowing a larger envelope, it allows for more of the place making. So I would encourage you to think about not restricting exclusively to seventy-five feet. Allow, if it comes down to setbacks that stack and study, we can work through that. We talked about the FAR, the parking. As was mentioned, I don't think you have multifamily projects that you could point to in your city that are parked at your code that have been constructed recently. And if you were to look at similar types of multifamily projects, Santa Cruz, over the hill, San Jose throughout the valley, you can, you can see the recommendations that we've made are market. Like, that's what people are building within that range. Some are right on transit and they may have a lower parking requirement. Some are commuter towns, right, that require people to have vehicles. And so there, there is value in that. And I think, as was mentioned, trying to get these objective design standards locked down is important. And that includes the parking, like, leaving it open-ended to some future discretionary decision of whether the parking study was adequately scoped and, and whatnot. I, I don't think that works. I think ideally you set the minimums, ideally it's, it's in line with what we've recommended, which was in line with market. And I'll tell you right now, I'm, most of the projects that we do, the minimums are what we've recommended. And a lot of times we build more than that. Like, I have a project right now in Southern California. It's seven hundred plus or minus parking stalls. We're doing nine hundred because that's what the unit mix and what the parking demand ended up being. And yeah, it's more expensive, but we want it to be a really good environment that can lease up and be financeable. And these are the types of things that get heavily scrutinized by lenders and investors as well. Because they want, they're, they do a deep dive into the market. Hey, what are these other project, projects parking at? How does yours park? And if we're required to build another one stall per unit or something, it's just, it just won't happen. And then on the commercial use, I'm, I can't emphasize this enough. And it's, it's crystal clear, I can read it from the Cosmont report. I'm looking at it right here. The vertical mixed blended use generally requires commercial uses to be built underneath multi-level residential. Cosmont believes there are limited such opportunities in Capitola. There are significant cost implications and viability is typically only found in high-density communities, downtown areas. As market rents need to be much higher and foot traffic needs to be significant for at least ten to twelve hours per day. That's the, those are the only environments where you see ground floor commercial making sense. And if there is a thought of replacing our current square footage in the ground floor of the multifamily buildings, those multifamily buildings aren't going to be built. Because you, you can't lease up that space. And again, our square footage at the mall, it's three hundred and seventy-three thousand square feet. Eight thousand of that is the pad that's vacant out in front of Target. Hundred and ten thousand of that is the vacant Sears box, which, yeah, we could demise it. We decided not to as the city was exploring this need for housing. Because if you sign a new retail lease, it ties it up for twenty-plus years. And so we've held off on that. So, and then Kohl's is seventy-four thousand square feet. Kohl's, like I mentioned, they're remaining in operation. They have a long-term lease. And so really, it's, the existing mall is a hundred and eighty thousand square feet. And from a tax generation perspective, if you look at the totality of the mall, most of the sales tax revenue is probably coming from Target, which we don't own. A lot of it's coming from Ross that we don't own. A lot of it's coming from Kohl's, which is going to remain in occupancy. A lot of it's coming from Macy's. And so I think there would be negative unintended consequences of placing a significant burden on, of commercial retail because it would have to be built in the ground floor of these multifamily buildings.
What is the number? You've done this math. How much could we ask you to do in commercial viable for the project?
I mean, I, I haven't laid out a site plan because we're waiting for all of this to kind of shake out, right? Could it be, what I, actually, what I'll say is, from a place making perspective, what we've seen be really successful is like an acre to acre and a half of like really well-curated restaurants, grass area, you know, cool place where people can have concerts in the park, kiosk buildings, little play area. Like, that's sort of the ideal mix. And you integrate that with, with sugar, alcohol and coffee and food. And like, that's sort of the secret sauce, right? And you program it really well. The quantity of that, some of it may be in the ground floor of a multifamily building. Some of it may be freestanding. It's adjacent ideally to existing surface parking that has to remain. So if you look at it within like an acre to acre and a half, that's like twenty to twenty-five thousand square feet of retail, kind of on the high end. There may be opportunities for additional, but that's where I start thinking about, like, again, there's Target and there's Trader Joe's across the street already and Whole Foods. And, you know what I mean? There's a lot of retail here already. That's why the mall, one of the reasons why the mall struggles. We can talk about other reasons why, you know, malls in general struggle right now. And we don't own a lot of malls, but it's a, yeah, it's a, it's a difficult business. Santana Row, hats off to them. They're in a, their radii that go around, they're, they're center. And that's what retailers look at is the radius, you know, one, three and five miles. What are the demographics? How many households? What kind of income levels? Unfortunately, you've got the Pacific Ocean in like a big chunkier radius, right? So it takes away a lot of the attractive qualities that most retailers are looking for. So, anyway. Okay, any more questions? Hopefully that was helpful. I felt like I needed to say that, yeah.
Let me ask you this then.
Yes.
So if we, if we were to support the two point O FAR as dedicated to the residential and then, and then it required a point five additional for commercial, you're saying that...
Not required point five, yeah. I, that, that wouldn't work.
That wouldn't work, but, but we're not including the hotel or the conference facilities or the parking in that too.
Not, yeah, yeah, not, but not required point five. Like, that would just be additional flexibility to work in the hotel and work in commercial that we think can be supported from a place making perspective. Because it's also a trade-off between, like, that's taking up land area. Like I said, you can't do single level, you don't want me to build more single level commercial retail. But that's what I would have to build in scale for it to pencil. And so that would, that would take up land area that should be allocated to the housing, should be allocated to place making.
But if, sorry to interrupt you. But if we're jacking it to eighty-five feet, giving that flexibility, so we're building it up higher to the limit of, you know, the, the three, two, or, sorry, the five, five over three? Thank you.
It's not guaranteed that we'll even build to eighty-five feet.
Right, it's just the flexibility to do.
It's the flexibility to do it. Like, we may run a market study and it may be, it may be more beneficial and more financeable to build a five-story wrap, which would be like a fifty-five-foot building.
Right, but integrating commercial is just, that's just something that's outside of what you guys really...
In large scale, yeah. And it's in line with what Cosmont said. Like, you just, it's not feasible. You can't lease it. And there's case study after case study where it's been required and it turns into a, a drag on the financeability of the project. And then it doesn't really benefit you from a place making perspective. Nowadays, there are a lot of cities that are trying to figure out creatively how to turn that vacant, you know, space that was required to be built. It's been sitting vacant for years and now they're trying to turn it into housing and it's not ideal. So that's, that's why I'm very concerned about like an overly significant requirement for commercial. And again, if you're doing a hotel, your hotel is ten X the amount, more than ten X, the amount of sales tax revenue. And on that point, we have no, there's no benefit in us trying to bankrupt the city. Like, why would I invest millions of dollars into a city that then isn't financially on good footing, right? So the hotel, it's a symbiotic relationship like that. That will help all of us. And I'd rather invest the dollars and the land area towards a hotel than to an arbitrary commercial number that, why, you know, no one can really give a justification for other than just... why, you know, no one can really give a justification for other than just, it would be nice to have. I don't know.
Not.
All right.
Let me just add on that. I can't tell you the number of buildings closer. Number of buildings I drive by that have been mandated this first floor, that's better. First floor retail and watch them be empty for ten years. The, the building downtown on River Street in Santa Cruz. The one at the south end of Pacific Avenue. It's over and over. Beautiful housing elements. And then these empty retail spots that the cities thought were brilliant and ended up being empty. So I'm, you know, as, as you listen to a representative, it's, it gets more and more clear. If we have a, if we have a commercial mandate of them, I say we make it de minimis, twenty-five thousand feet or less, and let them tell us or let them come to us and show us that, that space, that, you know, community space that has the coffee shop, the, you know, the, the nice, you know, the Santana Row, like Starbucks over there, that, that area that, that works. It's always busy and pleasant place to be for all the people that are going to live there and all the guests that are going to go to the and the fact that there is so much retailer around it does, does ring with me. You got that whole Browns Ranch bit and the rest of them that aren't going away. So I think you can make this case pretty clear to say, if we do it, it's a de minimis amount and let's see what they come back with.
Do we, are, are we somewhere in, I can't remember. Are we mandating a hotel in this ordinance?
No.
Okay. So we don't have that revenue.
We're, we're, the next topic I think we'll get to is a required financial analysis that will be mandated, but what, we won't mandate a hotel. We, we're not suggesting that at this time.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Okay. Let's go back to the beginning. Eighty-five, seventy-five. What's our, we need to give staff some recommendations so they can go forward. I, I think I'm sort of hearing people who are more or less neutral and we're okay with eighty-five. Is that generally where we're landing? Okay.
And I'm hearing to include some type of stepping if we go to
That's my next question. Do we want to be prescriptive enough to say eighty-five, three hundred feet from Forty First Street or what's our recommendation?
I think so. I think give them, give them, give them the envelope. If it's, if it's going to be eighty-five feet, it's going to be whatever the number we think is reasonable off of the thoroughfare. So two hundred feet. Give them that envelope to work in and then they can step it down from there.
Are there ideas?
No, I, I think it needs, we need to talk about step backs. And when we get down to that point of it, I think the flexibility again, should be there. But it's a, to me, it's a, it's a, we get a benefit somewhere in the process, you know?
I'll agree with Matt, Commissioner.
Okay. So we're going back to eighty-five feet in the central core and we'll leave it up to staff to figure out what central core means, but how far
I want to ask one more question around this, because we've got a lot of work to do in two weeks. So, um, is it important to the planning commission, there's Forty First Avenue, Capitola Road and Clara Street? Do you have any preference on a greater setback from any of those streets or do you treat them all the same? I, I am, there's, there's so many options, especially with the corridor study going on right now. I feel like the, you know, the Cosmont study could be addressing the present state, I mean, is addressing the present state that they were studying that entire area at that time, correct? When was that study done? Do you remember? Okay. Last year. But, um, if it was, if the setbacks were shoved towards Forty First Avenue, it provides, you know, that's a thoroughfare now. That's established as a thoroughfare. If, um, if it's shoved towards Clara Street, you know, like which way is this, is, you know, the development addressing, like which way are we really designating place making? And it's hard to tell without the, uh, something in front of us, kind of, like how they're really intention, intentionalizing, you know, this, this development. And I know that's not necessarily our business to do. That's your business, but, um, yeah.
All right.
Yeah. Right. So if we, if we push it towards Capitol and Forty First, then you'd have more of, you know, that space to kind of work with, right? I mean, in terms of a setback. Right, right. So that's, that's, I mean,
Okay, so.
I know one time we talked about, um, thoroughfares through their street access and stuff and, it was kind of tying Thirty Eighth into what used to be Forty, something like that. And this is your old design. I think we had the, something like that. So I think that would drive it. What is, what is we're going to have set up for the metro center? Tying the whole project together would drive it more than whether I'd rather see it closer to Forty First or not.
I think that gives us
So can you tell us back what you think we said?
Well, I think we, you're looking for some, first, it's hard, this is difficult, right? We don't, we don't know where the future streets will be or how the block will be broken up into more blocks. But, um, it sounds like we need to think about the main streets and how the buildings interact with them. I think within our objective standards, the design standards, we can talk about those upper stories and along, um, and then if there's a specific setback from just around the perimeter, that's really what would be.
Yeah, I think.
But it sounds like, yeah, I think we'll, we'll study it more and when we come back, we can, we could, we'll have to study it more, I guess.
I think we're all, just speaking maybe, maybe out of turn, but I think we're all talking about the upper story part being setback from Forty First and, and Capitola Road, right? Not, not the ba, not the base, not the three.
That was part of the question. I thought you were asking how the building would relate to setbacks from.
Okay. No, I think.
For me, yeah, I, I agree. The upper story is having a setback, but if you were talking about the roads, it'd be more, we'd have to see a bigger plan on what does the thoroughfare of the mall project look like?
So a typical, I'm so sorry. A typical double loaded corridor for a multifamily building, about seventy-five to ninety feet. So I think it would be along Capitola, Forty First, you go seventy-five feet and then ninety feet setback from that would allow you go to eighty-five. And that would, you wouldn't see it from the road as you're driving by. It would be seventy-five foot building, unless you wanted an eighty-five foot building. But that would be like a, a setback that would, it would achieve the desired benefit, economic benefit of having enough flexibility. Does that make sense? Because it'd be a
Yeah.
Yeah. So for, no, you, that would be problematic because then you just have a big surface parking lot. So you'd want, the setback, it should be an upper building step back where the, the building could be up to the road, up to Capitola and up to Forty First, seventy-five feet, and then an upper building step back of ninety feet, and then it could go to eighty-five feet. That would be the, like a thought.
Okay. I think you've got enough on that one, right?
I think so. And we'll, we'll work with what we've heard.
Okay.
And I will say that something that we might include in this in the future is when you're thinking about like your corners and making your corners interesting, you might want to have different standards at the corners in order for, to have more articulation in the architecture and make them interesting. We do have, um, Ryan Call on, on, who's an architect on Zoom. And through many of our conversations, one thing we want to avoid is everything looking the same. So to, to be able to allow differentiation in height is, is, makes for an interesting place. So. But yes, thank you. I think we have what we need for height. So now we can.
Okay. FAR, it sounds like we're in agreement with two point zero excluding structured parking. But we haven't talked at all about exception for the hotel and conference. Any opinions on that?
Yeah, I think that properly incentivizes, especially looking at the economic engine of what a hotel can bring in a conference. I know earlier you were talking about, or someone mentioned earlier about why have the conference center, but the way that they interact synergistically, just anywhere I've seen, like down in Monterey or anywhere else, it just draws so much people and they, they interact so well together. So if we're driving people to come to Capitola, right, and to use our amenities right there, I think they would, um, including it would be, you know, a good thing.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a real strong opinion about the exceptions on the hotel. And then we need a hotel, but I don't have a strong opinion on the, uh, exceptions versus.
Okay. So I think we're all agreeing with the
For, just a quick question right there, a comment. So we are, we're at a two point O FAR right now, just standard, right? What are your thoughts on having like a one point seven five FAR for housing and then point two five for the hotel, like a bonus right there and still include the exception?
Say that again?
So like, currently right now, right, we have a two point O FAR standard, flat, right? But if we're looking to really incentivize and get hotels and tourism and, you know, commercial or retail, whatever it is that we're looking, why not do one point seven five FAR, right? And then do like a point two five as like a bonus to that? Still within the envelope of two point O FAR and still working with the exception of having a conference center and hotel exception right there.
I guess my, my pushback would be we've been short housing for thirty years and we've been surplus retail for ever. You must have a default one. So I, I, I wouldn't want to mess with that. I think two point O's a fair number, in my opinion.
Sorry, I don't know what exactly all the cards we're playing with yet. And I, I like to have that opportunity to play that card later is, is what I'm looking at.
Well, the concern I have is, is more general. This Merlon Geyer thing may evaporate, right? They may not get the financing. Nothing may happen. We are writing an ordinance that covers the mall area for the future. So I think we need to be pretty broad on not being too overly prescriptive on this thing. So that, that's why I was, I would suggest we just leave it at two point four, or two point zero and not try to dial in a hotel, a casino or whatever else could generate revenue.
I would just hate for it not to be addressed and then, I mean, to actually state what we want. And respectfully, I, I do, I understand all of the points about commercial and, and all the above that we discussed, but it's still, the intention of the city should be to say, this is what we want. This is where we need to drive. And this is what it, Merlon Geyer could sell, you know, they could, you know, decide, okay, this is now this, and then another person comes in with these objective standards. And I, I just would hate to be the one that says, yeah, this is fine. Residential is great and two point O and we're not making any requirements. And I feel like it's a huge concession on the city's part. But I don't, I mean, that's just some personally.
Well, I, I think it's good to re, and
Hear the logic, but.
Yeah, and, um, you brought up a great point about that we're looking at the whole properties here, right? So, um, what is it? Winfield Partners is one group that's already identified that they're interested in developing. Have no idea what they want. And so, um, here we are, we're talking with Merlon Geyer because they're, they're the ones coming to us today, but this is bigger than just what Merlon Geyer wants to do. And so I think we need to be careful about tying our, our hands to certain cards until we get a little further down the road on what those things may be. And I, and obviously, you know, Jameis and with Merlon Geyer is our biggest player at the table and, and we need to address that. And we want to make it so it's beneficial for them and Capitola wins and we all win, but it is a bigger project than that. I agree. Good point.
So I'll say I'm unclear. I've heard three things.
Why?
So one thing that I've heard is, um, the staff recommendation to go forward with that with the floor area ratio of two point O excluding structured parking and then also excluding a hotel conference. I've also heard, keep it just at the two point O with excluding parking and let's not include the hotel conference. And then I also heard, um, keep it at a max two point O, but break it down so that one point seven five of that is for residential. And point two five of that can be used for commercial and that would also include the exceptions for parking and the hotel. So those are the three options that I've heard.
So I may apologize for not being clear and I was rambling all over there, but I, I would like to stay, I guess for me it'd be easier to say the same with the two point O, but I'm flexible to opening that up down the road as we go through the process. And if we get to, uh, an item that, you know, Merlon Geyer sees as a challenge and we see as a benefit for us, and maybe we could play that card that works out better for both of us. So I don't know what you guys think about doing that, but.
I like the staff's recommendations.
Which is two point zero with excluding parking and, and, and exception for hotel.
I agree with Commissioner Welch. I think that it would be nice to see to understand more as we go down the road.
We're trying to write an ordinance that we
I know, I know. I just want. Commissioner Welch, your recommendation is the two point O with the exclusion for parking, but let's talk about the hotel another time if, if it's necessary.
Your staff recommendation will get us to that same point, I think. Right? I mean, it's all negotiable down the road, I think, when we actually write the design standards.
Well, at the next hearing, you'll see the design standards and the draft ordinance for, it's, it's going to be happening really fast. So it'd be good to get some clarity on this.
So I, I think I would go back to the one point seven five and point two five. Given that, to encourage a hotel to be built.
Yeah.
So you mean that does that?
But then that limits their residential. So
Yeah, but they, but they, they could build three times as much of residential as they could possibly build right now with, with two point O. Okay, two and a half times. It's, it's, it's overly designed. We're, you know, again, it could be huge. I think they've got enough with one point seven five, in my opinion.
So the housing element says that we are required to do a floor area ratio of two point O, but I, I think this would meet the housing element. It also talks about mixed use and so if you wanted a one point seven five, if you, it's a two point O FAR, but one point seven five would be for residential and point two five for commercial. And it's not a requirement, it's a maximum.
Right. That's what I'm thinking.
I, I'm going to vote for the staff's recommendation. I think it's good enough for now. If they come back with seven, or one thousand seven hundred apartments, then we can figure that out. In the meantime, I think it's a reasonable proposition.
Okay, let's go just down the road. Let's talk about it. What's your opinion?
I'm inclined to support the two point O. I'm inclined to support the one point seven five. I, I just want to see there to be some type of objective standard that incorporates commercial, excludes the parking from the FAR, excludes the, um, just make it advantageous to then somehow be able to incorporate the commercial hotel or otherwise.
I'm, I'm still inclined to stick with the one point seven five, especially for opening up the envelope to eighty-five feet right there. And to what you were saying earlier, Commissioner, about, you know, this is bigger than just Merlon Geyer. We're doing something for our community too. And this is for any developer that comes across in the future. If, 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 or if not this works out. Of course, we'd love it to work out, right? But we, we don't want to give like too many concessions. We may not have anything for our community for the future too. So I think that looking at our revenue and our finances for this city, right, and looking at what hotel and conference revenue could bring in and how it could stabilize our, our finances for the future. And looking at what hotel and conference revenue could bring in and how it could stabilize our, our finances for the future would be very beneficial in that sense. So that's, for that, I'm sticking with the 1.75.
Any, go ahead.
I think to get this off the die, I think I, I can go along with Commissioner Key here to get the 1.75. And, you know, I think we all want to get to the same place. It's just, how much do we give up in the process though?
What are we giving up exactly? The less incentive to build a hotel?
Yes.
How much more incentive do we need to offer? Right now, the, the numbers are fairly obtuse to me. I don't know exactly what a 0.5 or 0.25 difference is going to be.
I'm with you. I don't know if it makes a difference.
In order for the planning department to keep moving forward, let's go with the recommendation and, or ask them to come back to us and tell us what this delta would do. What's, what's the difference between 1.75 and?
So we, we can draft it this way and I think it's an easy thing to flex. It's a really easy change between.
Yeah, I think it's a reasonable question.
And we can present it to you next time of like the A or B or whatever.
Yeah.
That's, that's easy.
There's a plus or minus with the two approaches, okay.
That way it gives you more time.
That was easy.
About it and consider it.
Let's go to parking. This is going to be more contentious, I think. So the, the staff recommendation is maintain the existing parking standard. I read it out before. It's one for, one spot for 500 feet, square feet or less, 1.5, 500 is 750 and two for 750 to about, anything above that. So most, if we assume somebody somewhere used that these houses would be an average of 800, that means everything is at the two number. And Merlot-Geyer came in and said 1.25 is what you should do because you don't want to overbuild parking. So not sure where we are.
Do we even know what you're looking at as far as housing unit size? I guess. Well, we're looking at, we're looking at their parking study, right? So where do we fall in there? And so you're asking us to reduce it, but, you know, you have multifamily housing and we reduce it to one, which we know is not working in our other housing units. So I, I guess it makes it hard when we're playing with, we don't know what your, your real cards are yet. What do you, if you're, you're going to put 1,000 square foot units up there, then it helps us to identify maybe where we are closer on the. But we're playing with like an unknown and it makes it a little more challenging. So for me, I like to just keep our standard, it's a standard, keep it as what it is today. And then if we get to a point where your housing units are, you know, smaller or something we can work with, then maybe we can negotiate.
Yeah, my, my thinking is that you want the perfect number, right? You want to know exactly that 300 units needs 450 slots. You want to know that. We don't, we don't have one building like this in our town, right? Nothing like it. Santa Cruz has screwed it up and has no parking for their buildings downtown. So we know that's probably not a good idea. So then you have to rely on expertise. So whether it's a parking consultancy that knows everything about parking, great, let's do that. Or whether it's the people that actually build these things all the time and how that works. So you look at Santana Row and those, you know, you're not going to get $4,000 a month or $3,000 a month for brand new, beautiful housing and not have the right amount of parking. So, you know, I guess I would say I'm somewhere between what Merlot-Geyer has put out to us and us, you know, or what we've, we've proposed. I'd like a better estimate, but in, in the vacuum where I don't have that information, right? I have to, I have to make a decision. So my, my default mode is to sort of go with the guys who are spending the 400 million dollars to build this thing. So I'd sort of lean that way. But if I had other facts, Katie, that tells me other things about details about how this really stacks up and what the usage is. Because we can dream of, of all of these residents using the bus. We can dream of them using the bus on shoulder lane on the highway. We can dream of them using the rail trail, but they're going to drive cars. And so we need to make sure that there's a, the right number. And it's, it's probably somewhere between the two numbers that are on the screen. If you make me vote, I'll vote for the staff recommendation.
Yeah, I agree. I think the staff recommendation and that's how we've always done it is that we come back with a development request, the parking or possibly a parking study and then evaluate it on a case by case contextual basis. Sounds reasonable.
Could you remind me what the requirements were for Capitola blocks? Was it the current retirement or something older?
It's.
I can't remember.
I think at the time that they applied, our, our standard was higher, but because it was a, it was a density bonus application, it was much lower. We'll say we've done this, the parking demand study at Kings Plaza, because there parking does not, if you just did a square footage of the commercial uses in there, they don't have enough parking. But we know that they don't really need that much parking, so we've allowed a decrease there. I also think the Beach Villas at the end of 41st Avenue, right after you go over the, they, I'm not sure what the required parking is per unit, but I do know, we used to have a requirement that was 2.5 and you had to have, the 0.5 was for your guest parking. And that was significantly reduced within that development. So this gives us flexibility. We can utilize, I think we have enough guidance here to draft it in such a way that possibly it's the developer that create, does the analysis and then we have a peer review of their findings. And that way they get to present how they got to the parking and then we hire another consultant to come in and just review it. We can work that out, but I, I think what I'm hearing is we're not ready to drop those numbers to what Merlot-Geyer is suggesting, but you want us to work within this to make it, is it friendly? Yeah, flexible.
Keep it within the objective standards as a standard that we would like more parking than, than less.
Oh, I, I do agree with Commissioner Howard that we are completely ignorant in the, you know, this type of building. So if there's some consultant that we could ask, like what is more normal? And I mean, we don't have, like, we're not next to a subway or any mass transit thing. And he's right, we're not going to get out of our cars. So, but this type of development's been implemented in lots of other locations, include, you know, in Southern California, for example, right? We already saw some examples at the other meeting. What do they do? I, I would like to know that, just as curiosity.
I would suggest that when this comes back, that we can bring that kind of information along with the ordinance.
All right, great, thanks. All right, parking is done. Now, commercial, should we prescribe the amount of commercial? Or just leave it up to the developer, whether it's Merlot-Geyer or somebody else? We, we know Commissioner Howard's recommendation.
I think a diminished amount. I mean, you, you want something and you don't want the blocks of housing and nothing else. So if, you know, pick a number, I don't know how you do it based on square footage or a hard number for the site, a number. I'd say something like 25,000 square feet, somewhere in there.
Actually, I'm thinking still, sorry.
Katie, can I make a suggestion?
Yes, this is Ryan, I'm the architect.
Yeah, good evening. So this might be something where you could study a couple alternatives because it's a little bit site. And, you know, I think really the range is somewhere between like 25 and 40. But as Jameis mentioned, you know, looking to contain that within the one and a half, you know, two acres at a maximum, he's spot on. That's a really, really good rule of thumb for what is essentially an intimate dining kind of entertainment district. We're not going to see the big, you know, bowling alley anchors or cinema anchors. They're going bankrupt or just not building new facilities. So, but I do think it could, to inform this decision, you might want to see just a very simple study of what a two-sided main street would look like, you know? And it could be abstracted, it could be just an abstracted diagram. But, or as Jameis suggested, a small central green with the retail around it. And the reason why it's connected to the site is if you have a small central green of a certain size and you have a minimum depth of retail or restaurants or retail, it kind of amounts into a certain amount of square footage. So, you know, I think 40 might be a max and somewhere, somewhere between 25 and 40. But it's, I think, something that deserves some very simple diagramming, which could be done and brought as a draft as part of the discussion. That's my thought.
All right, any comments on that?
No, I, I, I like that idea, right? Just under, get a better understanding. Of course, again, we're making a lot of these decisions without seeing anything yet. So we're just working with these numbers, right? If I had to choose leaning between what you recommended of like 40,000, between 25, number between there, I'll just take the average of like 35,000. But I need to, I need to see some diagrams or some kind of mockups.
Okay, you agree with that? Okay, so that's good enough guidance, just go back and study it. But it, it sounds like if we do put in something, it'll be a diminished number as Commissioner Howard said, not something large. Okay, so now we move on to the next major topic, which is.
Fiscal impact analysis. I think the remain, the remaining topics should be, go more quickly than the first two. Okay, so I think as we all know that mall redevelopment will have fiscal consequences to the city of Capitola, resulting from the loss of existing retail, the addition of new residential uses and potentially the addition of a new hotel, which could generate a significant amount of new revenue for the city. And for those reasons, we're planning on including in the Capitola Mall zoning code amendments the requirement that a mall redevelopment project prepare a fiscal impact analysis and that will specify who needs to prepare it. You know, probably what we'll say is that it needs to be prepared by a, it can be, it needs to be prepared by a qualified independent consultant that the city either can hire or that can be produced by the applicant, but then peer reviewed by an independent consultant. So the city can be certain about the quality of the analysis. And that this fiscal impact analysis will need to identify the net fiscal impact to the city and then identify any necessary mitigation to offset negative impacts. And so some of the details of the, of this will be fleshed out in the ordinance that will come before you. But that's staff's recommendation that for a mall redevelopment project with new residential uses, that it does include a fiscal impact analysis with that information available to decision makers with a development project application.
And I just want to add to that, that we do have Kaiser Marston, who does a lot of these types of analysis for cities and developers. They're on our team, so they're helping us as we produce this.
So a question for you on that. In your, the staff report, it says, describe how the city will consider the FIA findings when acting on the proposed project. What, are we going to prescribe what we're going to tell the developer to do? The a priori or, I don't, not sure where we're going to go on this. If we do this analysis and it says it's going to, as an example, it's going to cost a million dollars to resure the entire area of the Capitola Mall to accommodate these residences, what do we do next?
Well, in that particular case, if there's infrastructure that's needed to service new development, the developer would pay for those improvements. I think we're talking about broader fiscal impacts on the city in terms of increased service costs from additional residential uses as well as reduced sales tax revenue from the eliminated commercial. And then if that results in a net fiscal impact to the city, then what happens then?
Except one of those, well, okay, all right, that's us, right?
The question to you right now is, would, should we include an objective standard that requires a fiscal impact analysis within the code update?
Yes.
That, that's the question.
Okay, we, we got to do this in order, we got to let the public speak. We, now it's just question time for. Okay, now, time for the public to weigh in on this one. Any comments?
I just wanted to point out that whether or not you have an objective standard to provide an FIA, that's sort of irrelevant to what you do with it. The Housing Accountability Act requires you to approve a project that's consistent with the objective standards. And if they've produced the FIA, even if it says that you're going to lose millions of dollars a year, you still have to approve the project. So I don't know what the point of doing it is, other than just having that information. It's not any information you can act on legally. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments?
That's a good point, I hadn't thought about that. But my, my thought is more, and I understand you're looking at the entirety of the mall, right? So it's all, not just what we own. So what I would ask is that if there is a requirement, excuse me. I should have brought some water. If there is a requirement for fiscal impact analysis, that it be compared against whatever commercial is going away and not just about like the, the overall mall or the needs of the city, right? It also needs to take into consideration the fact that there will be new residents with discretionary incomes that are coming in. Every time I hear comments like it's going to be a drain, there's going to be thousands of people coming in here that need to have certain incomes to afford the rent and they're going to be propping up businesses that currently those people aren't here. So it's not a net loss. It is, it is, obviously, there are fees that have to be paid. As mentioned about infrastructure, those types of things are customary costs of building these buildings. But again, this is of the square footage that we're considering as part of our property, 110,000 square feet of it is the vacant Sears building. And the other 180,000 square feet is the mall, which is not generating significant tax, sales revenue right now. So I just, I want to make sure that if it goes this direction of doing a fiscal impact analysis, that it's being compared apples to apples and it's not just, oh, this is our chance to, you know, extract something out of, out of us because we're doing the trade off as well of comparing the existing retail and leasing it up versus housing. And we've been holding off on leasing up the Sears to accommodate the housing. So, but the point that was made earlier is an interesting one.
Yeah, great, thank you. All right, no other public comments, so let's talk about this one. Thoughts?
Well, is, is it indeed true that it wouldn't make a, wouldn't make a difference whether we have a financial study? Would the project would be approved or not approved based upon the objective standards?
So we would, we, we have not gone to the point of drafting this at this point. And so we just, we need to take that all into consideration. I would say that Jameis's points, we are, we would definitely be considering the additional retail sales that are generated by having more people shopping, like looking at what, what a typical household spends and how that is also increasing tax revenue. So we'll be, it's not going to be just looking at cutting commercial here and adding housing there. There's a lot of factors that go into it as well as like, there's, you know, a property tax that is now gained where, when you're adding this new residential and other. So there's, there's a lot that would go into this. It wouldn't be just simple math, so.
I, I think it's just proper business. We, we, you got to know the numbers. We have a responsibility to our community on where we're going with this project. And we just need to know the numbers regardless of what it means once we find out the numbers. We need to know what we're getting into, right? Are we, are we taking the city into a huge deficit here by loss of property tax? And if that's identified, then, you know, we got to look at how we, how we justify that. So I think any of us in our own personal homes would. So I think any of us in our own personal homes would do a cost analysis, or just, it's a common sense to me that it needs to be done, but...
I agree, a hundred percent.
I also agree.
No, no debate over it needs to be done, but we're putting it upon the developer to do this. Is that, that, that's what we're putting in this ordinance? The developer will do this financial impact analysis, not the city of Capitola.
We will do, we're going to have it to, like, they can provide it, and we'll do a third-party analysis of it, we'll, we'll do a peer review, or if they don't want to go about it that way, we could do the analysis, we could hire one of these...
They would pay for it.
That's my question, who pays for it? That's the only...
They pay for it.
Okay. So, do we make, we don't make residential units pay for any kind of financial impact analysis, why are we leveraging this on these poor commercial guys?
Probably the biggest project this city's ever going to see, so it, it's going to be an impact, and, and, you know what, if it was me and Jameis calling out, we could probably go down to Britannia Arms and discuss it, but they, they have a, they have a position here, right? They're in a for-profit business, we're in a, a, the chair that's trying to protect our community, make sure we're making right decisions. I think it's only, you know, a, a, a good ask of them to say, okay, let's provide this type of information, and, and so we can move forward with the group that we're going to... And I, I don't know about you, I've been getting a number of phone calls and discussions about this project, there's a lot of concern out there, and it, and rightly so, it's, it's the biggest project that this community has, has seen and probably will see. So I think we just need to do our due diligence, and, you know, it's unfortunate maybe following them, but they're going to have numbers anyway, I don't think there's going to be anything new to them, they're not going to get, go into business the wrong way either, so.
I think, I think the same way, getting the information and understanding the impact of the financial wellbeing of the city is, you know, basic business, let's do that and figure out what we're, what we're looking at, and I'd be surprised if it wasn't a net-net a positive. Think about, you know, the, you know, the construction workers in our town, we'll have hundreds working on that project for two or three years, and, you know, all the associated fees and whatnot, so I think net-net, you'd probably be surprised it's a positive element for the city, but let's get the numbers and understand it.
Yeah, I, I get all that, but I'm, I'm sort of struggling with why are we doing that three or four years from now when this project is being considered? Why wouldn't we do it now? We know the answer, we know roughly the parameters of a, a redevelopment project that's going to happen. We could do that, we could do this fiscal impact analysis today. We get the loss of retail, we get the additional revenue from new residents, and we get the cost of, of fire or whatever supporting residences, we, right? Is there any else in it that we were looking at?
There is, there's a lot more to it, because we don't know if Merlangeyer or any of the, any of the property owners on the mall block are going to, someone may decide, we're going to do townhomes, another property might say, we want to max it out to the eighty-five feet and have a really high density and no commercial, and somebody else might say, we're just going to do a hotel, like, if they're just doing a hotel, we probably won't do this analysis, but each time it's developed, we need to look at exactly how this will be programmed and what the impact is to the city, because if, if a project came in with all eighty-five foot, you know, to the max, just housing, there is a loss to the city. If, if it incorporates a hotel and a lot of housing, it's probably, as Commissioner Howard said, like, neutral or, or a benefit. So we, we just, we need to see what the input is to understand the impact.
Project-specific.
It is project-specific.
Okay, then what are we going to do with it? I mean, what are we, we're going to have this report, it's going to irritate the hell out of, if it, the answer is negative, it's going to irritate the hell out of the populace, are we going to now disapprove the project? I mean, right? What are we going to do?
I think it could provide forum for negotiation. If, if, if it's not acceptable to the city as a, as, as in terms of a, a model, then we could, you know, push and pull.
Well, right in the ordinance, that if it's negative, if the net result is negative to the city, we will negotiate with the developer for recouping those costs over the life of the project for the next fifty years, or whatever term we deem the project is, like, I'm struggling, like, I get this all the time in the business I'm in, people want these reports, and I go like, like, what are you going to do with this report?
I, I, I think all of us are sitting up here because, like, we care for the city, right? But we have to do our due diligence, right? And knowing those numbers in the spirit of transparency, so even if the community does see those numbers, right, and it's like, I don't like this, right? Data's going to be data, and then we, we could say that we did every single step properly.
Okay, I mean, there's some, there's public value in that, I agree with you on that, that's what you're saying, I guess, more or less. Okay, fine. We approve. Okay, yes, the next one, next major topic is the permits required.
Right, permits required, so in the zoning code, it identifies whether a land use is a P permitted by right, or if it needs a use permit, either a conditional use permit approved by the planning commission, or a minor use permit approved by the community development director. So currently, within the commercial regional zoning district, residential uses and hotels require a CUP, so that goes before the planning commission, that a notice, public hearing, restaurants, an MUP. And then in order to approve these permits, there are certain findings that need to be made that are specified in the zoning code, and also considerations for the decision-makers to consider when making those findings. So Merlangeyer has recommended eliminating the CUP, MUP requirement for residential mixed-use, residential and for hotels. And staff's recommendation is to maintain the CUP requirement for residential uses, for the planning commission to consider eliminating a CUP for hotels with conference facilities and a minor use permit for restaurants, eliminating those. And I think staff also recommends maintaining a CUP requirement for nightclub entertainment type uses in order to address potential noise impacts.
So the reason why you're seeing that last one is when we are, when we talk about restaurants, under our ordinance, there's all different types of restaurant, or food and beverage services, they're broken down to restaurants, bars, nightclubs and entertainment, and just want to say that we'll be, the, the ones that have greater impacts in terms of noise will, will remain as a CUP. And I want to just add to this, so within your conditional use permit, you're looking at the impacts that are generated from a type of use, and that's where you're allowed to build in mitigation measures, and so with housing, as we're seeing, when we're talking about this type of housing on a very large scale, we want to make sure the circulation works through the site, and just within the, it really looks at like noise and all the, the different impacts that the use can generate, and so I think that, that's why we're, we're recommending a CUP for the residential. And then within the hotel, I think we can tighten up those objective standards enough to make sure there is, are no issues related to the hotel.
Well, I guess that was my question, my question is, you know, you couldn't do the objective design standards with the residential as well?
So we're, we're, we'll be including the designs, you know, the objective standards for residential, but due to, you know, all these, the impacts associated with a large-scale residential, we're suggesting that the city build it, like, have the ability to require mitigation within a CUP. Yes, so the C, the conditional use permit really looks at what are the impacts, and then how can they be mitigated?
It enables you to attach conditions of approval to the permit, including conditions that are necessary to achieve consistency with the general plan.
So if we had gone the route of the, I think you called it form, form-based code, you wouldn't have to do the CUP, right? You've defined everything that you, you would be worried about.
Not necessarily, I mean, with a form-based code, you could also continue to require a use permit. I think the, the intent with a form-based code is to achieve the specificity that would eliminate that need, but, you know, with our objective standards, it's sort of a form-based code with a different name.
Well, my understanding is the objective design standards can also be as stringent as a form-based code, it's just that it's not ahead of time. We, we're not going to go into that depth, but we can add those measures into the objective design standards, is that all right?
Correct.
Okay, any other questions for staff before we turn this over to the public?
I guess I don't. Maybe I'm small-minded here. Why are they asking for this? Just as it's easier to execute on what they're trying to do?
Yeah, it would, it would end, the result would be a design permit that is reviewed against the objective standards, so you're not really looking at those, all the same criteria within a conditional use permit, that really doesn't only look at form, but also looks at function.
Okay, let's open this one up to the public.
Good evening. Again, under SB 330, the, the Housing Crisis Act and the Housing Accountability Act, projects need only be consistent with the objective standards, and even if there were a conditional use permit process that involved any kind of subjective standard or subjective finding, those would not be applicable to a project that's, that's, that's protected by the Housing Accountability Act. So the, I would encourage the city to create only objective standards, because if you have any sort of subjective standard or conditional use permit that has subjective standards in them, they won't be applicable if there's a project that comes in with an SB 330 application. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
That, that is basically why we made the recommendation or the request that we did, just to tighten up the objective standards, because I know what my attorneys are going to say when I, when, and, and we, we get subjectivity, I have a lot of stories of the types of things that try to get incorporated, and then a project's no longer feasible, or reduces the number of units, and then it's no longer feasible, and so that's, that's really the intent, is that the objective standards are paid enough attention to, that we can rely on those. It's, it's difficult, it's difficult when we, we're given a set of objective standards, we go spend millions of dollars to design a project, come forward, and then from the dais, subjective things come up, and it reduces the number of units we can do, or it changes the feasibility calculus, and then, that, that's what, that's why the, the state is putting these types of requirements in, is so that everyone knows the rules of engagement, like going in, and that's, that's why I made the recommendation. Just, the conditions need to be, they can't reduce the feasibility or the number of units, right? I understand, need to look at public safety and, and all those things, so ideally, it can be accomplished through the objective design standards.
Okay, thank you. With no other public comments, let's talk about this one.
Can, can you just give us what, one of those conditions may be, an example of what we did, put in the condition use permit that would not be able to tie into the objective design permit?
Um, so I, you know...
Trash can storage, or is it something what?
Yeah, I mean, just like circulation, right? So we'll have circulation standards, like looking at roads and what the right-of-way improvement should be within a road, and that's objective, and we can talk about sidewalk widths, road, you know, bike lanes, street widths, but then once you have the development in, and there's a mix of land uses, you want to see how that operates. And so if they're requiring a stop sign versus a traffic light, that's, that's where we would want to be able to say, we need to look at this and make sure that the traffic, the stop sign will work here with the number of trips that we're suggesting will go through here. So it's really just looking at function more or less. This is something that I, we will run through our legal, as well as the financial analysis, to make sure we're, we have to be objective, but this is all, in terms of getting the permit back in front of planning commission, it's important that there's... The design permit would definitely require the permit, we'll try to build up our objective standards as best we can, and look at the conditional use permit, but I think we should probably further study this as well, just to, we don't want to make it subjective, that's for sure. I don't know, Ben, if you have more to add to that?
Yeah, I guess another thing is, like, if you try to address through an objective standard every possible issue that could come up on a project like this, including whether you have a stop sign or a traffic signal in a certain place, sometimes you end up locking yourself into a place that you don't want to be, and that you end up having to grant exceptions or deviations from these established standards. So design issues can be addressed really well through objective standards, I think the, some of these sort of function questions might be better handled through the use permit process.
Okay, any thoughts?
I, I would lead towards the conditional use permit, just because, like you said, ideally, in a perfect world, we would have objective standards so tightly dialed in that everything is addressed, but we don't know what we don't know, we don't know how they're going to play out until it actually plays out. So having that kind of flexibility to address, right, I think is key.
Can we put this slide back up with the staff recommendation, please? Is there's...
Specifically for residential.
Yeah, this one, thank you.
Hey, within what they're talking about with the, the applicability of it being recognized, is that, and you're saying that legal will look at that in terms of, like, if we did, I would, I would hate to rely on the flexibility and then not actually have the flexibility, even though we're analyzing, you know, contextually, design by design. I, I'm sure there's a marriage of the two, but, I, I mean, how, like, would we wait for legal to then weigh in on like, how deep we really want to go into stop signs, or how deep we want to... I remember the last iteration, we were looking at some inbound apartments that were just not, I don't, there were like, the apartments that were, or the structures that were pushed up against Bromer, and it just wasn't an, I don't think, an acceptable design for the community, so just, but that subjectivity, I just wouldn't want to like, you know, outside of Merlangeyer's involvement, it's just a city interest kind of thing.
I, I think what would be helpful, in the staff report, we actually have, like, what needs to be considered by the planning commission for a conditional use permit or a minor use permit, and the first one is operating characteristics, hours of operation, traffic generation, lighting, noise, odor, dust, and other external impacts. So lighting's easy, we can write an objective standard for that. Traffic generation, not as easy, hours of operation, easy. So that's why, like, there's, the next is availability of adequate public services and infrastructure, potential impacts to the natural environment, and physical suitability of the subject site for the proposed use in terms of design, location, operating characteristics, shape, size, and topography, that will probably be handled through our objective standards, the design standards, but, and then in order to approve a CUP, you have to look at that it's allowed, proposed use is allowed in the applicable zoning district, it's consistent with your general plan and LCP.
I mean, even, sorry.
It's just, there's, it's really all about the, the function, because form will have covered, but, and, and as Ben said, you don't, you, you could almost be too limiting if you try to prescribe the function too much in your...
And like, going back to parking, that would be part of the whole, the discussion at that point, evaluating the context, and then, you know...
Leila.
Yeah, thank you so much, I apologize, I have a bit of a delay, so sorry if this is, I'm free, my face is freezing, um, as I'm talking, but hopefully the audio comes through.
You can turn off your video if you'd like, Leila, but... Oh, no.
Okay. Sounds good. So, yeah, I think what I would just add is that any project will most likely have to, well, will have to undergo some level of environmental analysis under the California Environmental Quality Act. And so things like traffic impacts or, you know, air quality or noise or things like that will also need to be evaluated at the project level once we know what exactly the project is under the, under CEQA. And so that might be an opportunity as well to kind of think about some of these other kind of mitigate, more mitigation type of-
Leila, you're on mute.
Sorry, I'm not sure if any of what I said came through.
Most of it came through, talking about CEQA.
Great, okay. So, yeah, essentially that the, you know, whatever project does come through, we'll be evaluating it for CEQA impacts and, you know, seeing if we need to incorporate mitigation measures to offset any of those impacts.
And we've lost, was that, did you wrap it up?
Yep, that's it.
Okay, thank you. So we will coordinate with legal on this more and see how far we can take the objective standards. Is there a takeaway at the end of that to wrap it up, Leila, in terms of requiring a CUP or relying solely on the objective standards?
Yeah, I think we'll need to take a close look. I mean, we will want objective standards adopted. And so, you know, we want to make sure that even if we go through the CUP process, what's being considered would be consistency with objective standards, thinking about, you know, different state laws in play. So it's really, you know, where we look at more of the environmental impacts, that we might have more flexibility as to, you know, project-specific mitigations and those types of things to offset specific impacts like that. But we'll take a close look at that.
Thank you.
Okay.
So we'll work on that. I don't think we need direction.
Okay. And then the last topic is additional objective standards that the commission would like to see, correct?
Right. I think we just wanted to check in in additional time. We talked at the last Planning Commission study session about this. And then it was also at the workshop that we received a public feedback on this subject. So, you know, I think it's, it's really important to emphasize the fact that the existing objective standards were prepared for a very different type of development. And so mall redevelopment presents a lot of unique design considerations that we need to make sure are adequately addressed in the, in the objective standards. And so I think the kind of direction that we're headed on this is really to establish a new set of objective standards that apply uniquely to mid-rise development in the mall property as well as other development types that we could expect to see or want to see on the mall properties, such as a hotel. I think there's also this idea that maybe outside of the mall properties, some of these larger buildings could be proposed in the future, maybe using state law that allow for applicants to exceed the zoning that currently exists. And maybe these standards could be useful to deal with a project like that if that were to come down the road in the future, just to protect the city if that were to occur. So in the staff report, there was a, we attached summary from the workshop. Here are some themes that came up. You know, I think that, that some of these commissioners have pointed out before, I think some, you know, interesting comments about open space and thinking about the greenery that's provided as part of that open space and not exclusively urban-style, public plaza-type concepts was interesting feedback. And, you know, I think that we did hear a lot, or from a number of people, the desire for there to be mixed-use activity in this area. And I think that Planning Commission direction and conversation on this previously was reflective of that. So this was a useful event. I'm glad that we did it. And we're really going to be making sure that the standards that we put together reflects this public feedback that we receive. So like I said, I think we wanted to just check in with the Planning Commission again on the subject of objective design standards now that maybe you've had a little more time to kind of digest all of this. And if there's any input on this subject that you want to provide us to consider as we're working on drafting these standards.
Well, I'll start with our, our capital favorite, which is building massing. And then the equivalent of this monster thing is, do you have some standards somewhere that you go? I mean, our massing standards are not going to work on this type of project, right? You'll need something new, I assume.
Yes, I think that massing can be controlled or would be controlled in a variety of ways. We may have a maximum block size standard that would sort of dictate the maximum footprint of a building within that block. I think there can be requirements for maximum building length. There can be requirements for major passing breaks within a building of a certain size. And then I think you have the upper-story step-back requirements that we've been talking about that also deal with massing. And I think that also, and Ryan, feel free to jump, feel free to jump in here as well. I think thinking about the way that facade composition affects the perceived sort of size of buildings is going to be part of the design standards that are aimed to break up the perceived size of new buildings and also create visual interest in a way that doesn't establish this monotonous repetition of architectural features over a long, straight building facade. So, so, yeah, so all things we're thinking about.
I would just add to that, since you invited the comment, Ben, is we don't want this to look like a project. We don't want someone to say, "Look at that project." We want people to look at this and say, "Look at that district." So I think having some criteria about architectural diversity is important. So it's not, you know, so there's some visual interest and surprises you get deeper into this complex. And, and there are a lot of architects that are very good at these kinds of things. We just really need to express some of those values in the standards at a high level so they can, they can create a very interesting district block by block and not something that feels like a project, you know?
I got nothing, other than make it pretty, you know? You can show us what that looks like. I'm good on my end. Do we-
Are you going to public comments?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Yeah, okay, let's open this up to the public, Ben. Sorry.
Thank you. One constraint I wanted to highlight that the city is operating under is the no-net loss provision of the Housing Crisis Act of 2019, which basically says that the city can't reduce the developmental, the ability to develop housing, whether it's floor area ratio or total, total floor area within the city below what was allowed in 2018. And I know we're, mostly this evening, we've been talking about in the context of the mall project. But the, the community incentive program applies currently to projects outside of the mall context in the, the community or the CC zoning and as well as several other zoning districts. And so I would be concerned, earlier tonight, you expressed potentially interest in reducing the floor area ratio available for housing projects. Right now, it's available at 2.0 with an incentive. And reducing that to 1.75, that could be a violation of the no-net loss provision of the, of the Housing Crisis Act. I know the City of Santa Cruz, when they created their objective standards, they, they added more step backs and setbacks for their corridors areas. But they did an analysis of what that meant in terms of the total buildable volume for those corridors. And they realized that in order to get the additional step backs they wanted and additional setbacks, they needed to increase height in order to not result in a, in that loss. So if you're considering those sorts of things, especially outside of the mall context, you really want to make sure that you're doing that analysis, that you're not reducing the, the total buildable area. And so, and that could be, that could be open space requirements, new open space requirements. That could be new setbacks, really anything that physically constrains the project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments? That actually did lead to my next question was open space standards. I mean, how, how do you do that? Or can you do that? Because the public said, you know, in the public comment, that's, they said publicly accessible open space. We want to, we want to encourage that development. I don't know how you do that through a standard.
We can identify a minimum amount of new publicly accessible open space total for a project. We can identify the minimum dimensions of a individual public open space so that we ensure that at least one open space area is of sufficient size. We can identify required amenities within an open space. We can also potentially require active ground floor commercial uses along a percentage of the perimeter of that open space if we wanted to do that. So there's a lot of standards like that that we can include within the amendments to really specify exactly what will be required for publicly accessible open space.
This is one of the areas I want to talk about, the open space. I thought we had somewhere in one of our standards that two feet per unit, it was a requirement. I've seen other areas say 2% per unit, they have to have open space. But I, well, we need open space, no doubt. I hope that we can be a little bit creative in how we do that, so it's not just a block of square open space out next to a big block building. Personally, I'm not as, I think our, that their design people, your design standards will do enough with our articulation of the building and the step backs and the, the types of sightings and coverage it's going to have that's going to do a good job. I trust that's going to happen. I'm more concerned about some of these other things, like the width of the sidewalks, open space, bicycles being able to get through the community. There's, there's no bicycle on Claire's in that area. They're looking at the corridor now. How are we going to do that? To me, it seems like that would be a better thoroughfare for this multimodal type passage through, from 38th over to Claire's in that area. And it could be just that walkable area that, you know, that, man, I keep going back to the, the design in 2019. We were real close. That was a, I think we were real close on what that kind of, the build looked like. We're looking at different structures now, but I would hope that our objective standards would meet those type of things. I know LiDAM won't be taken care of. I'm not too worried about that. You know, the fire department's not part of the city, so I assume that they're going to have some input into the process on how they have access and setbacks for their truck and turnaround areas, stuff like that. But I, I think there's a lot to be said about objective designs. And it seems like it's short to, at this meeting to say, "We're, okay, now we're just turning it over to you to come up with all of them." Not that you can't do a good job, but there's a lot to be said about how we're going to do that, because it's not just this Merlot-Geyer project. We're looking at a much larger, larger block there that's going to be affected long-term. And I just think we need to kind of nail some of those things down. So we don't currently have a standard for open space per unit on these type of developments.
We do for multifamily.
And is it like two foot per, you know, I think it's something like that?
It's a certain amount of square footage per unit for individual unit as well as the common space.
So you can think of open space that's for the residents of a project, right? And that's something that's different from open space that's public.
Absolutely. And I think our standard has that, the per unit, it's got their open space. Well, you can do balconies and stuff like that versus the open, I'm more concerned about the open space to the public in the overall project and how we address it. And I, and I think we need to be flexible with it to allow for design. But at the same time, it's something that needs to be given out there and is part of each project that's being brought through on that, for those properties.
I'll just add, as Jameis mentioned earlier, with the additional height, it does give more flexibility on the ground floor to, to do more place-making and have more benefits. Because you, with that additional height, previously, we were at 40 feet in height with the public benefit to go up to 50. And so by going up to 75 feet with some 85 feet areas, you're creating more opportunities to, to capture that open space in those community spaces, the public realm.
Is there a, I mean, along with the open spaces, is there a way to either prescribe or suggest or something, some type of rooftop growing, you know, gardens areas that just kind of create, not just like, I don't know, just, is that a reasonable request or no?
I would put that in the category of something that you wouldn't want to require.
Right.
But that if a project can forward with it, that, that would be an appealing amenity.
And then-
Yeah, one, one place we see rooftop as an option is in the shared, as an alternative to courtyards or private balconies, you can say that rooftop gardens can serve that in lieu of that. And then it is a very expensive construction type, but sometimes that can be incentivized by giving folks a break on, say, balcony depth or, you know, those other kinds of spaces. So I think it is possible.
And thank you. And then as far as modulation with the front of the buildings, is, do we, do we have that addressed? Where it's like we have a thousand square feet and then we have a recession of our, the facade bumps in? I mean, are we addressing that?
Yeah, and so there's an existing modulation standard that I think won't work well for buildings of this scale. And now we're going to replace it with something that is more-
Okay, and the same with the corners and the same with the stepping and all that other stuff. So, okay, so we're drafting. Okay. I have a whole bunch of notes on that stuff that I'm not going to sit through every-
The public talked about, and along with the multimodal thing, the requirement for the transit hub. I mean, is that a standard? I mean, how are we going to, there's sort of a transit hub there now. How do we specify what we want going forward?
So we'll be, that'll be one thing. We're setting up a meeting with Metro to discuss that. They do have an easement through the site, so that's something we'll be looking at.
Ah, okay.
Well, I recall we tried moving it in the, to the back at one point and it ran into some problems. Where it's at now is not conducive to anything other than getting somebody on a bus. Getting through the property is difficult, so hopefully we can realign that in the process.
I think that would be a goal of Metro, most likely Merlot-Geyer Partners and the city. I think we're in alignment on that.
Okay, any other comments, commissioners? Okay, I think that's, yeah.
We've made it through. I, I just, I don't even think we need to. So, yeah, next steps. I did want to, if you'd like to make comment, I know the gentleman left, but if you want to make any comments about our infrastructure? Jameis, is that something you wanted to discuss or? Jameis, was that something you wanted to discuss, or? Okay, yeah, okay. So, next steps are, we'll be producing the zoning code amendments. They'll be published the week of November 10th. And then, Planning Commission hearing is on November 19th, a special meeting. It'll start at 5:00 PM. And then, the city council hearing after that will be on December 4th. So, we'll be presenting an ordinance. Reach out to me. We'll be in contact. We'll, as we're publishing this, it'll be good to get answers ahead of time, because we've got quite a big task in front of us for a first, for a recommendation to city council that night. And if needed, we could schedule another special hearing, but it has to have 24-hour notice prior to. So, we'll see if we can get through it in one night, but we might need to schedule another meeting. I also wanted to let you know, well, I guess that's it for this evening. So, thank you all for your hard work.
If push comes to shove, we could still, 18th of December is a city council meeting? If we had to push this, and we'll still meet the requirement to get it done this year? I don't even know if there is a meeting.
There, the last, sorry, I think that date is wrong, or December? The December city council meeting is December 12th, or no, 11th? So, we'll have to fix that. There is a Planning Commission meeting on December 4th, so if we needed to utilize that Planning Commission meeting... Actually, I think we would, I, I need to check the state law about that, because there's a certain amount of time that you need in between. So, I'll, I'll check on that. But we'll definitely, but when we get to the November 19th meeting, we'll have an alternative second meeting date if necessary.
Okay, is, the zoning code amendments, is that supposed to be the objective design standards?
Yep, that is.
That's a push. That's a lot.
That's why I asked, how far can we push this?
Yeah, that's a big...
That's a lot of work.
And, and, I hope you understand, I'm probably going to send you thoughts along there before we get there, obviously, as they come up. I, I think one of the struggles is like, the way we do our meeting processes, you presented this information tonight on wherever we're going. We don't really know what Merlot-Geyer is going to present to us, but we're, we're, you're expected to get these objective design standards done. And we really, I don't, I personally don't feel like I've had a lot of time to give input on what specifically they should be, based on the information we have. So, I would hope you're flexible in the next week to receive input on what those thoughts may be that we didn't present tonight.
Yeah, we will make ourselves available between, like, we're always available, but we'll make ourselves more available between the 10th and the 19th to make sure, as questions come up, we can answer them. So, in alignment with the Brown Act, so on with one-on-ones. But, yeah, so with that, I think...
Do you have anything else for a director's report?
I do have just one update that I could give for the director's report. I just wanted to let you know, next week, or no, I'm sorry, on November 13th, the city council's going to get, it's two big items. One is 41st Avenue Corridor Study update. So, that's directly related to the same neighborhood. So, after that same workshop in which we split it into mall objective standards and the 41st Avenue Corridor Study, got a lot of great feedback. So, we'll be going back to city council to ask if they agree with the goals that we've set for 41st Avenue before going into the details of the design. And then, also at that meeting, there's a request for 3720 Capitola Road, which we've seen over the years, there's been proposals for a, for an annexation with the Bulb Avenue property next door. This, we got a request from the developer of the Bluffs. They're under contract to buy that project and to produce affordable housing on that site. And they'll be asking city council for a letter of recommendation tied to a grant. So, there's a CDBG grant opportunity that's coming up. You have to, the application is due in November, and they have to submit a letter of recommendation from the city. So, that'll be another item. It won't be coming in front of you for that purpose. They need a letter from the city council. And that concludes the director's report.
Okay, thanks, everybody. We will adjourn this meeting to the next regularly scheduled meeting, which is Thursday, November 6th, at 6:00 in this room. Thank you all.